I'd like to call this meeting to order for the special meeting of the City Council and the Block Grants Advisory Committee for September 10, 2015. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Voisin?
Here.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Here.
Our first order of business is the public comment session. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comments portion of this agenda?
Yes, I can. Do you want me to take the role of the committee first?
Okay. Why don't you do that? Thank you. Thank you for keeping me in line.
Committee member Acosta?
Yeah.
Committee member Allen?
Yes.
Committee member Burtnett?
Yes.
Committee member Doyle?
Committee member Fisher?
Here.
Committee member Frost?
Present.
Committee member Gonzalez?
Here.
Committee member Litzinger?
Yes.
Committee member Rivas?
Here.
Committee member Seifer?
Here.
Committee member Thomas?
Here.
Committee member White? O'Neil? Committee member Woolcut?
Yes.
Committee member Iglesias?
Here.
And Chair Marquez?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, could you please read the public comment portion?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on matters on this agenda only. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however state law does not allow action to be taken by the City Council on matters not on the printed agenda this evening. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit or request to speak.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
None for this portion.
None? Okay. Any comments at this time, Mr. Hayden?
Okay.
Moving on to this meeting's joint session, Madam Clerk, could you please read the title? And I want to thank all of you for being here tonight, even though the weather out there is beautiful and you probably would rather be someplace else.
No.
The City Council will conduct a joint study session with the Block Grants Advisory Committee to discuss federal regulations and clarify the funding process, criteria, and then discuss priorities for the allocation of Federal Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnership Program funds for fiscal year 2016-17.
Thank you. And I think I saw a member of the Block Grants Committee walk in.
Ms. O'Neill.
Ms. White, Ms. White O'Neil. Yeah. Thank you. And thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Mr. Hayden, I believe that you wanted to talk about the format of tonight's joint meeting before we turn it over to Ms. Quayle Hudson.
Thank you, Mayor Patino. Members of the City Council and the Block Grant Advisory Committee, prior to staff making their presentation, I thought it'd be best to provide an overview how we were going to facilitate tonight, since we have 15 members from the Block Grant Advisory Committee and we have five members of the City Council. After I make my initial comments, I'm going to turn it over to staff, staff being Ms. Quayle Hudson, who will be making a presentation. Please, during the course of her presentation, if there's any clarification questions that you have, any questions you'd like to ask staff as we're going through the slides, please stop and ask the questions at that time so we can identify what those answers are. After Ms. Quayle Hudson makes her presentation, then what we're going to do is we're going to take a short break, and then after the break, we're going to turn it over to the public comment portion of the agenda, get questions from the public, and then after the questions from the public are raised and comments from the public are raised, then we return it back over to the Block Grant Advisory Committee and also the City Council for discussion and deliberation. There are some suggestive changes to the upcoming process that staff has indicated in the staff report for your consideration. After the deliberation and the discussion between the Advisory Council and also the City Council, then my recommendation is that the mayor bring it back to the City Council for further deliberations and direction to staff.
Thank you. So if any of you have questions as we go along, probably just raise your hand, and I want to make this real relaxed and everything, so if I don't, if Ms. Hudson doesn't see you, then I will see you and I'll call it to her attention, but there's quite a few of us here. So if you would just raise your hand if you have any questions as she goes along. Is that fine with you?
Great.
Thank you. Okay, you're on. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Chairperson Marquez, and members of the Block Grants Advisory Committee, staff and the public. This evening's meeting is a special joint meeting of the City Council and the Block Grants Advisory Committee, and the last joint meeting of the Council and the committee was back on October 12, 2011. The purpose of this meeting is twofold. The first part of the meeting will be an educational session, informational session, to discuss the Federal Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program regulations. The second part of the meeting will be to discuss potential changes that the committee and the council may want to make to the funding process and to clarify the criteria and priorities for allocation of funding in the next funding cycle. As we go through this presentation, as City Manager Hayden indicated, if you will just interrupt me if you have questions, and I will try to answer them as we go along. Whoops. Okay, there we go. We'll first start out with an overview of the Community Development Block Grant Program. This program was created by Title I of the Housing Community Development Act of 1974, and it's administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Local discretion is allowed on the use of the funds, and that makes this somewhat a unique federal grant program, as long as you follow all of federal regulations, which we will get into this evening. The city has been an entitlement grantee. We've been very fortunate to be an entitlement since 1975, and as an entitlement community, this is quite beneficial in that we are, receive a block of funding annually based on HUD's formula that includes such factors as population growth, level of poverty, age of housing, and extent of overcrowding. And census data is basically what is used to determine the formula. The purpose of the CDBG program is to develop viable urban communities, provide decent, affordable housing, and a suitable living environment, and to expand economic opportunities. Under the program, the first step to determine if an activity is eligible is to review HUD's list of eligible activities, and some of those activities are acquisition of property, public facilities and improvements, site improvements, private utilities, clearance and demolition, interim assistance, relocation, removal of architectural barriers such as ADA improvements, housing rehabilitation, code enforcement, historic preservation, commercial or industrial rehabilitation, economic development, public services, and It should be noted that under public services, there is a cap on the amount of funding that can be used for public services, and that is 15 percent of the overall grant. This is a statutory limitation that has not been changed over the years, and is based on the overall philosophy of the CDBG program, that it's a bricks-and-mortar type program to be used primarily for physical development activities. There's also a cap of 20 percent on general administration that can be used for administering the program. Now, there are also some clearly identified ineligible activities under the program, and those are basically buildings for general conduct of government. That would be, for example, City Hall of the main police station, or the main fire station, or wherever administrative-type activities for general government are conducted. General government expenses, political activities, purchase of equipment, unless you are possibly purchasing equipment as part of a public service, it would be allowed under that, operating and maintenance expenses, and new housing construction. Actual housing construction for affordable housing can be done under the home program, and you could actually do activities under CDBG in support of affordable housing, such as acquisition, public improvements, site improvements, those types of things in support of affordable housing, but not the actual housing construction. The next step to determine if an activity is eligible is if it meets a national objective, and there are three national objectives according to HUD's regulations, the first being primarily benefit low and moderate income persons, the second to prevent or eliminate slums or blight, and the third to meet a community-wide urgent need.
Excuse me, Celeste, can I stop you for a minute? Let me ask you this. When under prevent or eliminate slums or blight, when we had that serve Santa Maria a couple of weekends ago, would that fit under that category?
Actually, to qualify under slums and blight, it has to be a project such as, as an example, our downtown redevelopment project, where a survey has been done to determine there was physical deterioration in the area. So there are, like, you would have to do a study and determine a specific target area to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Sometimes certain activities, you may think they qualify under slums and blight, they may, but it may be easier to qualify it under low and moderate income benefit.
Thank you.
At least 70 percent of the grant amount each year must be expended on activities that benefit low and moderate income. So the program emphasizes low and moderate income benefit, and there are various ways of meeting one of the national objectives, but it should be noted that regardless of, but regardless of what objective you use, there has to be documentation of public benefit to be provided. Under the low and moderate income benefit objective, there are four subcategories of how an activity can be considered to benefit low and moderate income. And the first would be limited clientele. So that would be those activities that are serving a specific clientele, and at least 51 percent of those have to be considered documented as low and moderate income. Or as an area benefit activity, where at least those benefiting residents in a certain area, at least 51 percent of the residents in the area must be low and moderate income. So as an example, most of our public services fall under limited clientele. They are each providing a specific service for a specific clientele in need of that service. They intake those clientele, so they do an intake process where they have to gather the information on their income and other needs, and they have to provide that documentation. They keep records on specific clientele, and they have to provide that information to us. As far as area benefit, most of the area benefit activities would be a facility, like a public facility, that may be in a certain area, such as I would use the Boys and Girls Club or a recreation facility that is located in a low and moderate income area and is open to the public in that area where they're dropping in for certain programs or services. And they're not necessarily intaking them in as specific clients. So another example would be the Oakley Park Project. It's a neighborhood park in a specific area that's benefiting the residents in that area, and it's open to the public to do that. Then there's also a way of providing benefit through housing, and we have done, as an example, down payment assistance programs, actual new affordable housing or housing rehabilitation, those types of housing activities, and all 100 percent of the housing units that you're assisting with CDBG must be low and moderate income. And so obviously, they have to go through an application process, a client intake process, and determine to be low and moderate income. And then the last would be jobs. So this would be activities, as an example, they're usually economic development-type activities where they will be providing jobs, and usually new jobs, where at least 51 percent of the jobs created must be for persons who are low and moderate income at the time of hire. So at the time they are hired, and it has to be documented, there's a survey form that has to be filled out in order to document that they are low and moderate income.
Could this be used on summer jobs, like in the city?
It's supposed to be permanent-type, well, it's based on full-time equivalent, the way we track it. It could be. I believe it could be. We would have, depending on the activity or the program, we would have to see what activity category it would fit under.
For instance, if a private business wanted to do, like, interns or do summer jobs, much like job training was done in high school years ago, would that be permissible?
We can do it. We can, it can be done with employment, job training-type programs.
Thank you.
HUD also has determined that certain population categories are presumed to be low and moderate income, and these population categories are abused children, battered spouses, elderly, disabled, homeless, illiterate, persons living with AIDS, and migrant farm workers. However, what this means is that documentation of income is not required. However, the city requires that the subrecipients collect this information and provide it Okay, in addition to the federal regulations, then the next step is that we determine if an activity meets one of our local criteria. And a number of years ago, the City Council had adopted this additional city criteria for public services, and this has been somewhat modified over the years, and a few years ago, you may recall that you added the at-risk youth as a top priority. So these are the criteria, and these are outlined in more detail in Attachment B of your report, but they are basically, priority will be given to food, shelter, clothing, or safety on an emergency basis. Priority will be given to at-risk youth, and specifically those programs that prevent juvenile delinquency and divert at-risk youth from gang involvement, crime, substance abuse, family violence, school problems, and out-of-control behavior. Services to be provided are targeted at Santa Maria City residents, so we do not, we do not allow payment of city CDBG funds for non-residents. They're all Santa Maria City residents. No duplication of services. So this is to avoid funding new agencies that propose to offer services that maybe are already being provided by another agency in the community. So we do not want to duplicate services. The agency also has sought funding-
Excuse me, Celeste. Okay.
A question about that. So we sort of historically have a number of agencies that receive funding year over year because they're progressive qualified and did really good work. So what if a new agency came in to the community or an agency developed a program, could they submit an application, and would it be reviewed competitively, or would they be not allowed to apply because someone's already doing the work? Would they want it to continue, or could that just sort itself out in the deliberation process?
Well, we'll go farther down the list, because another criteria is that an agency must have been providing services in the community for at least three years, so they have to have somewhat of a track record to apply. Secondly, sometimes a service, because, you know, there are a number of pantry food programs, as an example, out there, and they sound like they're the same program, but they're not really duplicating their services because they each have a unique type of service that they're providing, such as, an example, the Pacific Pride Pantry Program is different from the pantry program that Catholic Charities does. So that's something that the committee has to review, you know, and-
Ultimately, the point is that on the applicant, they make their-
Yes, and determine that they are unique and they are not duplicating their services. Are there any other questions on that? Collaboration with other programs and resources. This is something that the committee really brought up a number of years ago, that they want to see agencies working together, cooperating, and collaborating on providing services when at all possible. And as I mentioned, a track record, so the applicants must at least have been providing services within the community for at least three years. And going back to that, it may be an agency that's outside the city, that maybe they're, such as maybe they're actually a Santa Barbara or San Luis Obispo agency, or that's their umbrella agency, but they may have been providing services in Santa Maria for at least three years, so they would be eligible. An agency that's providing services whereby we're reducing government costs, they're providing an efficient level of service, and generally, the committee is looking at the cost of providing that unit of service, you know, are they using volunteers, how are they, how are they providing their services at an efficient level? Are there any questions about that? Attachment B of your report outlines that in more detail. In addition, and this criteria is for public services, but in addition, over the last several years, the committee has actually developed some criteria when they are reviewing capital projects, and this is under both CDBG and home. The first is project readiness. We have been pressured, shall I say, by HUD in recent years as far as performance standards and expenditure of funds, and they have really been enforcing that, the performance regulations. And you, from time to time, may hear some communities being audited, being monitored, being asked to pay back money. So we don't want to get in that situation. We haven't been in that situation, but we need to make sure that our projects are shovel-ready, they're ready to go, and that we can expend the funds in a timely manner. The second is financial feasibility. We have to look at how realistic is their budget? Do they have other funding sources? Are they really ready to go? Is the program or the project ready to move forward and operate sufficiently based on their budget? Cost efficiency. Is the budget efficient? Are the costs reasonable to develop the project or deliver the services? Does the budget effectively accomplish the goals of the project or program without using more funding than is necessary to accomplish those goals? And administrative capacity. I mean, typically, we're working, unless it's a city project, we're working with subrecipients, subrecipient agencies. Do they have a track record? Can they really pull it off, so to speak? Do they have experience in dealing with complex federal or state regulations and other requirements? Do they have experience doing similar projects? As we know, some of these federal regulations are very complex, and so we need to know that they have the administrative capacity to work with the city to accomplish the project. And I wanted to go over a little overview on the home program quickly here. The home program was established by Title II of the Cranston-Gonzalez National Affordable Housing Act, and as the name suggests, we can do a variety of affordable housing activities under home. It is, again, administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The city has been participating since the beginning of the program in 1995. A local match is required, and there are various ways that we can do the local match. And we have been participating with the county under a consortium because we were not able to qualify on our own as a direct grantee, so that's how we had been receiving our funding. At one time, back in the 90s, we were receiving probably 400, almost 500,000 through the consortium. This last year, we were down to 190, 199,000, I believe. As you know, recently, the city decided to withdraw from the consortium for various reasons, and we will, we are actually receiving our 2015-16 funding, but we would be eligible to apply starting in 2016 through the state for home funding.
So then, did we receive that designation, or is it still through the county?
We have-
Oh, we've got her.
Well, we have withdrawn. It's just that the withdrawal doesn't really take place until the 2016 funding. So we are receiving our 2015-16 money-
Okay.
-for this fiscal year through the county, but starting with 2016, we can, we'll be eligible to apply to the state.
Okay, so I don't understand. Do they grant that? Will they send us a letter saying you are eligible, then? You don't have to be in the consortium?
We, we've already withdrawn.
Oh, so we've withdrawn, so we've gotten rid of them so we can be on our own? Okay.
Yes, uh-huh. What will happen?
I was just going to say, and I think the difference is that we are actually going to become competitive at the state level-
Yes.
-not for a very specific amount of money each year like we get from the home program. But so if we get a $2 million project that is- But so, if we get a $2 million project that is competitive at the state level, we would be able to apply, as I understand it. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. We will have to compete at the state. We currently have enough funding to continue our TBRA program, and we are under contract with the county to, we have a sizable amount of funding for that program. And we will take applications in this next funding cycle for affordable housing projects. And if the committee and the council determine that they would like to apply for those projects or programs, then we would put together an application that would go to the state for HOM funding. We're not limited in what we want to apply for, and we could apply for more than one program or more than one project at the state.
So, we were limited then when we belonged to the consortium?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And, Celeste, you were saying that last year, our total allocation from the consortium was 199,000?
I believe.
Is that right?
So, yeah.
Thank you.
But we're not limited on how much we want to apply to the state.
Sky's the limit, right? Great. Thank you.
I will say that under the HOM program, the regulations are a lot more complex than But I think, as an example, just operating our TBRA program is pretty labor-intensive, but, I mean, we know what we have to do, and I think the staff can handle that.
And, Celeste, can you remind me, is it true that if we apply to the state, the state provides administrative funds for the funding?
Correct.
And you don't get that in the consortium?
Correct. Correct. Well, I think we'll be eligible for 5%, I believe, through the state. So, these are the types of activities that can be funded under HOM: homebuyer assistance, housing rehabilitation, conversion of structures to housing, or reconstruction, new construction of affordable housing, acquisition of property, site improvements, utilities, demolition, relocation, tenant-based rental assistance, and program administration. We have typically, under, with our HOM allocations, funded new housing, new affordable housing projects. We have done homebuyer assistance. Actually, I believe we've done it under CDBG because it was easier. We funded tenant-based rental assistance. So, those, we've typically done it primarily for new housing, new affordable housing construction. So, in addition to all of the federal regulations, the local criteria, we also have established these funding priorities. And these funding priorities are for both CDBG and HOM programs. These are detailed in your attachment. I believe it's Attachment D. So, the top priority is, has been prevent homelessness, address critical emergency, at-risk youth, and special population needs. Special populations meaning elderly, frail elderly, disabled, those populations. The second priority is expanding educational and youth opportunities. The third, provide affordable housing. Fourth, expand economic opportunities. And number five, we added during this last process. And this was as part of our five-year consolidated plan to revitalize existing neighborhoods. This was added in direct response to the input that was received a few years ago at all of the town hall meetings, and also council's direction that you wanted to see more CDBG funding used for city capital projects. And one of those being the Oakley Park renovation project where we are using 1.2 million in CDBG funding for that project. Are there any questions before I move on to the next section? Okay. So, we will move on to what the current process is. And this would be the current application and allocation process. Over the years, this process has become increasingly competitive, particularly under public services, which is where we have less money. But it has been the process, has been an open, public, community-based process, and we have formalized it over the years. So, we have a formal written application process. You have a formal committee. Everything they do is public under the Brown Act. And the advisory committee, along with the staff, has overseen this annual process, and this is what it involves: assessing needs in the community, which includes conducting a needs workshop that'll be done next month. Then we issue a notice of funding availability, request for applications. We do a mandatory pre-application workshop, which basically, and we, the staff, provide technical assistance to applicants wishing to apply, and they are required to attend the pre-application workshop. The committee reviews the applications. The applications are provided to both the committee and council. And then they break into teams where there are three committee members on each team. There are five teams. They divide up. Our staff actually does the schedule. They divide up into five teams, and each team goes out on site visits where they basically will meet with approximately eight or nine. Each team will review and meet with eight or nine of the applicants. They prepare then their team recommendations with a written report that is presented to the full committee, and they conduct their committee deliberations, and then they prepare their recommendation that will go to city council for consideration. The final step in the process is a public hearing that's held before the city council, and at that time, council will give their final approval of the allocations. And as you know, this is a very labor-intensive process for both the committee and the staff. And I don't know if committee, Chairperson Marquez might want to make a few comments about the process.
I think this past, this last deliberation was the most difficult one. It was very competitive, and I think what we had in our mind, that we were going to make the decision what is fair and being impartial, and look at the needs, and look at the criteria and the regulations to see who would re-award or approve the funding. I know that some are really disappointed that some of the decisions we made, but we had to do the best we can, and it was very long and enduring. I think our committee did an excellent job. It's really hard, but I think city council really appreciated because they wouldn't want to sit on our side making those decisions. But I think the most difficult part is the deliberation, and I think the rest of the committee would attest to that.
Ms. Marquez, how do you break up into your committees? How do you decide who's going to be in the group of three?
The staff decides. They look at what was assigned last year, the prior years, and then try to, what they would try to do, if a new person comes in, they try to get that new person into a team that is a veteran, you know, been around, instead of putting, and then have the veteran be the leader. So, they look at who has been a team last year so they won't set them up again this year.
Okay. And then when you go to a site, how long do you spend at a site?
Normally, you're supposed to spend 45 minutes because we have a time schedule before we meet to the next one. And sometimes we get done early. Sometimes we go a little bit late, and, you know, we have five minutes to get to the other, to the other site. But norm is 45 minutes.
So, when you're going to a site, do the people know the expectations you have, and how long you're going to be there, what they intend, what you intend to see?
Mostly, what they would do is they explain their program, that the funding that they're requesting, and then a lot of times, as they explain, the committee will have follow-up questions. And I think, but because of the, some of the questions, I think the team has experienced this past year, they, and that's one of the recommendations we're going to make, is that we'll have prepared questions, so the same question would be asked of each of those agencies, so that way we would find out the answer, you know, because otherwise, we're just, only one will answer, one team, one agency would answer, not the other. But we're going to be consistent this time.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Rock?
Hello?
No, it's kind of awkward.
Okay. I think, I'm not-
You're-
It's a creepy crawl. Is it on? Yeah. A question, with the new, with our withdrawal from the consortium or whatever, and we're going now, I guess, to the state directly with projects. In the past, this was all melted at the same time, I'll say, combined. With the new process and the new appeal, is there a deadline, you've got to do it now, or as projects come later on? Let's say six months is a project. Can we, or can you, apply to the state at that time for a project that maybe someone came up with in the off-season of doing this process that we usually do?
Well-
Did you get what I was asking?
Yes. I have researched the state's process somewhat, and they operate much like we do on an annual process. But their process, luckily, is a little later than ours. So, I believe their applications are due in June or, I think in June.
So, we could separate these issues?
Yes.
Okay.
But-
Make it easier on there.
But one of the recommendations that we'll talk about, too, is that we're recommending staggering the application deadlines, where we'll take capital and affordable housing projects and city projects first, and then two weeks later, take the public service applications. Because that would really help us, the staff-
It gets confusing for us, too, I think.
Yeah. And then we would separate them out and-
Okay. Thank you.
In addition, once the allocations are approved, then staff has a whole other list of issues that we have to deal with in managing and implementing these projects. So, I wanted to just list here some of those requirements that we basically have to deal with in satisfying HUD's requirements. The most important standard, and I alluded to it earlier, is the timeliness standard. By May 1st of each program year, the city's unexpended funds in their line of credit must not exceed 1.5 times our annual grant amount. So, we have to come under that ratio, otherwise we get in a little bit of trouble. So, we've been able to meet that standard. That may sound like a lot, but if you get a big project in there that has a lot of funding associated with it, allocated to it, that 1.5 is pretty critical. So, as an example, the Oakley Park project is, you know, was a big chunk of money. And when we did the library, as an example, we had a big chunk of money. So, that's another reason that we've got to make sure that our projects are ready to go and before we allocate a lot of funding to them.
So, if I may, Celeste, so the 1.5, so we're saying that the money that is granted to us on June 30th or July 1st of the year, that we can only have one and a half times that grant-
Correct.
-in the bank and unexpended by May 1st of next year?
Right.
So-
And-
So, that includes carryover from previous years?
Yes.
Okay.
Everything. Right. So, and it's a little tricky, too, because we typically don't get our grant agreement from HUD until August. So, you know, our program year is already started July 1st. And yes, that includes any prior year funding.
And then you have to go through your process of the NEPA and-
Yes.
-any historical society.
Right. Right. Correct. Also, a benefit test requires that at least 70% of our expenditures must be benefiting low or moderate income. So, when we do our annual reporting and we input all data into HUD's system and they spit out this report, you know, we really have no problem meeting that benefit test because most of our activities benefit low and moderate income.
Moderate goes up to 80%.
80% of area median income.
So, what is that right now for us?
I believe for a family of four, it's 60,000. I believe for a family of four, it's about 60,000.
Okay. Thank you.
In addition, there are public participation requirements that we've already talked about throughout the process. HUD requires that the city prepare and submit certain documents, such as our five-year consolidated plan, our annual action plan, our annual performance report, which we refer to as the CAEPOR. Performance measures are required for each activity. So, the city requires our subrecipients, they must provide at least one output measure and one outcome measure. So, HUD requires that we have at least one performance measure for each activity. Reporting and drawdowns are required to be done in HUD's online system. It's called IDIS. And other requirements include compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, labor standards, fair housing, equal opportunity, all of those requirements. So, staff is the one that follows up on all of that to keep us out of trouble. Sometimes, based on the nature of the activity, there may be other requirements, so I'm just giving you a list of the basic requirements. Are there any questions about that? We do have our income limits posted on the city's website, and actually, we have a lot of information on the special projects website for our subrecipients and the general public. The current income limit is $64,150 for a family of four. So, as long as they don't exceed that, they would qualify as meeting the low and moderate Okay. Recently, the committee and the staff met and reviewed and critiqued the last process. And on May 11th, at the committee's May regular meeting, they approved some suggestions. They discussed the whole process, and they came up with some suggestions- discussed the whole process, and they came up with some suggestions for improvement to the next funding cycle, and these are provided this evening for council's discussion and for your consideration or direction to the committee. The, the first is with the application forms, we have always required attachments to be submitted, and those were like the, the list of board members, your financial statements, any audit reports, and this last year, we added organizational chart, so there's a whole list of, we were required attachments. We've always required those, but we have not, the committee had decided that they didn't want all of those attachments with their applications, so what they would do is their team would, they would either review them in our office, we had them available, or this last year, what we did is we created a binder for each team, so they were able to review all of those attachments when they went out on their site visits. It's my understanding, or I've kind of heard from a few council members, that you want copies of all of those attachments, and I think the committee does, too, so there, we're suggesting that we require the applicants to provide all of the copies of the attachments.
Let me ask you this, then, only the, the team of three gets all of the attachments regarding those agencies, and the rest of the committee does not, say, agency A, B, and C, and so the rest of the committee does not receive the attachments?
They can review them in our office, but the, they were only getting the copies-
Just, just the ones that they-
...of the attachments for those that they're going out on site visits, so like for eight or nine, right.
So, if they don't get into your office to review them, and then they have to vote on these?
Well, they have all of the application information, they just don't have the-
They don't have the attachments?
Attachments, right.
But that's also the sort of the benefit of the team approach, if we all had to read forty applications and forty attachments and do forty site visits, it would take us all year, so that's why the team is sort of entrusted to be the, the expert on those groups, and theoretically, to answer any of the more complicated-
Okay, so then when you, so then when you get together to make a decision on that, then, say, your team presents your, whatever-
Agent, or your, your lead-
Yeah, on the, on the agencies that you've gone to visit, but the rest of the committee does not get the other attachments to review?
Unless they want it.
Unless they want it, okay.
You know.
Yeah.
But I'll put your attention on the eight or nine, if you're responsible for-
Yeah, no, I understand that, yeah.
They, they do get all, all, everyone gets all of the applications, but-
Yes, but they don't get the attachments, yeah.
It's just the attachments, but-
Thank you.
So, so that's one of the suggestions that-
Rose, Rose Lee had a question.
But, Celeste, I think, I think we also decide that, that the organizational chart needs to be attached to all the applications.
Yes.
So, everybody would have a copy of that.
Right.
I think that's what one we agreed to. The financial audit, because we know it's that thick, we know that that's okay with the team, but I think the organizational chart was supposed to be with everybody.
Yes. Staff made a mistake this year, because in the past, what we would do is staff would make copies of a lot of the attachments, you know, and we mistakenly didn't do that this year, so that's another reason that we're thinking we'll just require the applicants to submit along with their application.
Okay, so the applicant submits how many?
Twenty-five copies.
Twenty-five copies?
Uh-huh.
And that's with the application and the attachments?
Yeah.
Have they always done that?
Yeah, but we haven't required, you know, the attachments, like, we haven't required the audit reports, or the financial statements, or the budget.
Okay, thank you.
So, now, we're suggesting that we do.
Thank you.
Also-
Can I ask, Celeste, so with the request by council to see all of the attachments to all of the applications, in that binder you have, that we'd have access to that binder, so if we wanted to see all those, rather than making copies, we could also access that information from your office and binder permit?
Yes, yes, but now, if, you know, if we agree that we want to require all of that, then we will provide them to the council. You're going to end up with a couple of-
Binders.
Big binders, yeah.
And, and the binders would be this thick?
Right.
We'll have two of them.
Okay.
Understand.
Anytime, any of you talk, you need to tell me who you are, because the clerk here has her back to you, and she doesn't know who you are. She doesn't have eyes in the back of her head, but just about.
Sorry.
Thank you, that was Rose Lee Marquez.
Another idea was, and I think Rosie came up with this idea, is that we're probably going to scan a lot of these attachments and provide scanned copies to those of you who are more electronically inclined and would rather have them that way, so Rosie thought of that idea, so-
I see some nodding yes on there, so.
Well, I think that's a great idea, I mean, the volume, and to get two of them, it's going to be overwhelming, to be able to scan and do those things, too.
Right. So, we're, we're trying to think of an easier way of, of doing that. And then also, we had a new section on the application organizational structure section this last year, and we want to add to that, that the applicants include on that chart, not just employees, but any independent contractors that they have working for them. And the committee is very adamant about requesting that, along with the capital applications, that they submit three bids, and they're encouraging that these be from local contractors, unless it's a situation where the type of work, if there are no local contractors doing that type of work, for them to explain that in their application with, along with their bids. Tim, do you want to speak to that?
It's not just that, Tim, I want to make-
Okay, Tim, yep, say your name.
Tim Sefer. We also sometimes get bids from out of, out of the area people that are much cheaper than our local people. Boys and girls clubs new floor, no one could compete with that new floor, the system, and so we granted them the money for that. They weren't a local contractor, but they were the correct contractor for that project, so we, we try to get the local people in here, but we do make exceptions for that.
And I, just as an anecdotal comment, sometimes, three bids is pretty, pretty tough to get for a project. I, I mean, if, if the, if the applications are due in December, is that right, or November?
Yes.
November and December. The awards aren't made until June of the next year, the funding isn't probably going to be available until September, October of that year, now all of a sudden, you've asked three contractors to bid something that's a year old, now all of them need to rebid this thing, if it's a fairly inexpensive type of request to the CDPG committee, I think we're, we're asking contractors for a lot. I mean, it's one thing on a, on a, on a big project, but it's another thing on a thirty-thousand-dollar roof repair, to get three legitimate contracting bids.
It's, some of the, sometimes we don't even get one decent bid.
Right.
We've been having some real problems and issues with that, and we have, even this past year, we have allowed one of the applicants to come back and make sure we get the additional bids. They only had one bid, they used the, the reason, whatever the reason was, and we said, well, please, we need the other bids before we can allocate any money to this, so, so they did come back with the other bids, and it was after the, after the deadline.
So, I guess I'm just asking-
We have to have some way-
Right.
To, even if it's a year in advance, we have to have some way of knowing that they're, they're at least in the ballpark with the number of, the amount of money they're asking for.
And, but I, I guess I'm just asking for flexibility on that, on that item, especially, I mean, like, go out and try and get a roofing bid right now at, at prevailing wage, you know, they, they just laugh at you, they don't even want to fool with it, I'm not going to fool with paperwork, I get prevailing wage anyways, it doesn't matter, you know, and, and so I, I, that's all I, let's don't get too structured.
Alicia Iglesias, the problem is, is that when we have different organizations competing for the same amount of money, and I have organization A that says, I need, you know, thirty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars, and this one, other one's saying, well, somewhere in the ballpark of twenty thousand dollars, we can't do that.
Sure.
And every organization knows that the deadline is in December, and, you know, I'm not going to give, for instance, we had, actually, two years in a row, I think, a certain organization that applied, they wanted something in the ballpark of thirty thousand dollars. They hadn't talked to anybody, and I'm, we're responsible for this money, and I'm not going to fund something where it's in the ballpark of, or maybe we'll get a bid in next year, or maybe, you know, we have to have the numbers, or else we don't know how to divide up the pot. And I understand what you're saying, but you ought to understand, you know, when we have people come in with exact amounts, and they can show us, well, it's going to cost this much for these three projects, that's what we're going to fund.
And, and I fully understand, I'm, I'm just saying, on the bidding process, I think that, especially during these times, we have to have some sort of flexibility.
What, uh, Tim Sefer, what would you suggest, what are you saying, like, one bid, or?
Well, no, 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 I'm, I'm just saying, you know, I, I would say at least two, but like, you know, we got, I'm, now, we, Good Samaritan Shelter got funded for repairing our roof on our, on our emergency shelter, and we're having a heck of a time just getting one legitimate bid from a contractor, it has to be prevailing wage, you know, nobody, none of the roofers in town want to touch it, you know, it's just one of those things, so.
And we understand that you're not going, you know, sometimes there's just not going to be somebody local that's going to bid on it, but when you have bids coming in from all of San Luis, from El Balas, oh, so, nothing from Santa Maria, or Santa Barbara County, or, you know, we frown upon that, because I know that there's businesses here that are willing to bid on that project, but I do understand that sometimes, you know, you're going to run into issues.
Sure.
Okay, you guys need to give your name and speak into the mic, so that our clerk here can get your information.
Bob Orup.
Did you catch that?
I'm sorry. Well, I, I guess, just from the aspect that this is the public's money, and the transparency, and the critical issue of identifying and selecting agencies that qualify for that money realistically, is your job, and then ultimately, our job, so I commend you on what you do, and I, I guess, if an agency has a critical problem, then they need to document that and pass it on, rather than, well, about this, and we've got bids coming and those kinds of things, because that's, that's a little bit unnerving to hear that we might be passing on money under those circumstances. Thank you.
Is the issue with getting the bids around, getting bids with prevailing wages, and that's why it's harder for contractors to get back to the agencies, that, I'm just trying to clarify why?
I think, yeah, I, I think the biggest problem that I see on this, especially for the smaller capital projects that we're looking at, are asking contractors to bid it in November, and then come back and update their bid again in September, October of the next year, all of a sudden, you know, many of them just don't even want to bother with it, they're going to spend as much time bidding it as they're going to have profit in the, in the project. So, if anything, I would say, let's have some flexibility on the front end, and get, you know, require more of the three bids on the back end, to make sure that the funds are being utilized properly.
So, one thing is the prevailing wage, but the other thing, then, that you're saying is that we're asking contractors to make a bid so early on, that it's not worth their time to then, months later?
Exactly.
Okay. I guess I would say that might pre-
And I think you were going to say, but the money's already been awarded, we don't have to use all the money, I mean, if we get much more competitive bids at the time of award, that money can go back into, into the program.
Possibly.
It, it sounds, uh, Tim Sefer, it, it sounds like a pretty complicated thing, because we're, we're really, it gets so difficult to dissect who's getting what, and, and it's critical to these agencies to get their money, so if we don't really have a clue of what we're awarding, or if we're awarding one agency too much, it, it's going to be very difficult.
And, Tim, I'm not saying, I'm not saying you don't have a clue, yes, we are going to at least get a couple of bids, I mean, I'm reading in this, it's three bids required or nothing. I mean, there are certain projects where it's just so specialized, we may not have three contractors that can give us a bid on that, or because of, of certain things. I'm not saying, Tim, just give the money out.
Rose Lee Marquez, Chair, I think in every business I've belonged to, and, and, and reading HUD's requirements and all the regulations, three bids are always required, one way or another, we, we need to get three bids, however we, and if the, if the agency knows the problem way ahead of time and plan wisely, they'll know when they start applying that they got to get these three bids in, so I think that it could be done, you know, but we will look at it and be flexible, but, you know, we still will require three bids, because that's the norm for every corporation, or the requirements of HUD. I, I believe, I believe when we had that code of ethic class or session early apart this year, it, it indicated that if you're going to get contract bids, you need to get three bids.
HUD's requirement is that you need to determine that the costs are reasonable, and the way we do that is to, when possible, get three bids, that's kind of a standard norm, so.
Tim Sefer, so, Jack, would it be better if we didn't say, three bids required, but if three bids, when possible?
Three, three bids are absolutely recommended, yeah, no, I, I would, I would agree with that, and ninety percent of the time, ninety-five percent of the time, probably, we are, you know, the, the, the organization is going to be able to get three competitive bids.
We seem to have a hard time getting three bids.
It is, right, and, and I, and I have sympathy, and I have sympathy for some of those, and especially on those smaller projects, if you're doing a ten thousand dollar, whatever it is, something specialized or something, it, it's difficult sometimes to get the three bids.
Usually, the capital projects are, are valued at a higher-
Substantially higher than that, right, right.
Maybe setting a bid limit, a number bid limit, based on the cost of the project that they're asking for, like, if you're doing a, a project that's, you know, up to this dollar amount, you have to get two bids, if you're doing something that's more substantial, you have to have three, that might be another way to try to look at it as well.
And I still believe that, leave the recommendation of three bids in there, I'm just asking for the committee will have consideration if there is just not three bids available.
We definitely have in the past.
Yeah.
Right.
And I, and I, and I have agreed with that, but I, and I guess the only reason I bring that up is because when I look at suggested change that we say require three bids, I, I, I get a little nervous when it, you know, the absolutes come down.
So, we would add three bids when possible?
Three bids.
Kelly White O'Neil, I think it'd be perfectly reasonable, and within the way the group works, is, there's narrative space to just say, thorough research resulted in two bids, this is a specialized project, and third bid wasn't available, I mean, and the committee can just accept that, or, or not, and then that's also the benefit of the site visit, the question, that could be one of our mandatory questions, if you did not submit three bids, why wouldn't you submit three bids?
Right.
I mean, there's room for-
I knew, I knew we had a lawyer in there.
Well, Tim Sefer, the, the other thing that this is going to trigger, because we're saying that, that, that we want these applications one hundred percent complete, or else we're not going to look at them, and so three bids would make a complete application, so you're right, it is going to trigger some other, some other issues.
So, three bids required unless special circumstances can be demonstrated, that, yeah, something along that-
Or do you want to say recommended, three bids are recommended to be submitted?
Recommend is not strong enough.
No, no, I, I would not like to see someone say, you know, that, oh, well, we couldn't get that, maybe a second or a third bid, I would strongly recommend that we require the three bids- I would strongly recommend that we require the three bids unless there is some circumstances that we can't get it, bring it back to the committee. I have, I think you guys will make a good decision if it's brought back to the committee.
And have them explain on the application.
And explain it, yeah.
Unless special circumstances acceptable to the committee.
Okay.
And then you have to determine what those are going to be.
Very. That's up to you, for the flexibility, is the committee- But it's kind of our hope, too, that, that, I mean, with the august group of people that we have here, I mean, the whole idea is that you are there to make those decisions and to, to make those judgment calls when necessary. I mean, if we just had a, a list, a checklist, we, we could have staff do that. I mean, you're the folks that, that are able to, you know, geez, make that common sense decision, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Uh, Tim Seifert, this is going to come out in deliberations. This is when this issue will come up, when we're all sitting around doing deliberations, and where all the teams are talking, and one team has three clear bids, set pricing, this is the cost, this is the time, this is, this is shovel-ready, this is the, this is, and they have this, and then we have the other one over here says, "Well, they only got one bid, they said it's a specialized deal, they, they couldn't get anybody else to give us another bid." That will be looked at by the committee members as well. We have a shovel-ready job here with all our criteria in mind. So it, it would actually be up to the agency to make that determination. By, by not completing that application, they are taking a chance of, of losing out to another agency.
The onus is on the applicant, yes.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. But you guys are going to have to also make the decision on the importance to the community of whatever that argument might be.
And, and that's when it'll happen.
Yeah.
Okay. Another suggestion is that capital projects must be shovel-ready. We've already talked about the importance of this. And also, along that line, we want to require that they submit a, some sort of a site plan, a development plan for their project. I think a lot of times, the reason, and going back to the bidding process, that they're not able to get these bids or estimates along with their application is they haven't clearly defined their scope of work, and what improvements they're actually requesting. So, I think this will help if we require the site plans. Also, we've had a little bit of an issue where sometimes we get an applicant applying for a new project, and they have already been funded for another project in a previous year that has not been completed, or they have not expended the funds. So, the committee wants to suggest that they not accept applications if they have a previous allocation that has not yet been expended.
How often does that happen?
Well, we've, we've had a few issues with, like, I would say, in the last four or five years, with two or three of the agencies doing capital projects, so.
And sometimes, the capital projects are of a nature that they might expand longer than the funding period for specific projects. You know, I'm going to use my roof example again. If we don't, if we don't get our funding pretty quick, and El Nino gets, we're, we're not going to have, be done by the next funding cycle.
Right.
And I, those, those sort of things can't happen.
And sometimes, they run into issues, and I think they don't have the administrative capacity to handle it, you know. Some, if these are nonprofit projects, sometimes a nonprofit agency doesn't have someone on board that really knows how to, you know, manage a capital project, is an example. Or they don't have the experience, they don't have anybody on their board. So we've kind of run into those issues, too.
Tim Seifert, we, we also, we try to look at the project and make sure that it can be completed within the period, the time period, because it creates so much of a, of a problem for the staff to follow this and do the reporting. So that's actually something that we look at, to make sure that this job can be completed in the amount of time, and, and sometimes it doesn't happen, it hasn't been a couple times in the last few years, but that, that's one of the things that we look at. We, we want that project to be funded and to be completed within that cycle.
Kelly White O'Neil, just a quick question plus. Could you just remind me again of the timelines? So like, we awarded money in, I think we went to city council in May, they approved it, and so the first allocation started June, and then-
The program year is July 1st through June 30th.
Right, so then, and then agencies submit for reimbursement every quarter, or every month? I don't remember.
There is no requirement as far as how often they submit. For capital projects, I mean, you know, if it's a smaller project, sometimes they'll only submit maybe two, two or three requests for payment. On the public service side, you know, they're all different. Some do quarterly, sometimes they'll do it monthly.
But we're saying that between July 1 and, you know, December 1, they have to spend the money if they want to submit a new December application. So it's six months, not twelve months.
Well, I don't think we're saying now, yeah. I think you would have to review that, kind of on a case-by-case basis. Because if it's, the other thing that we'll run into that can possibly delay, like a larger project, is we have to complete, like, the environmental review, and, you know, sometimes that can take time, depending on the level of review that's required, and we need to get clearance from HUD, et cetera. On the smaller projects, you know, that's usually not an issue, but-
So you're basically-
But it is, it is a good point to bring up, that, you know, what, what we were looking at is, we had some projects that maybe had an allocation from two years ago, you know, and they had not yet moved forward or expended the funding.
So, so this recommendation is mostly just to make sure projects don't languish, unless they're actively working on it and drawing down.
Right.
If they haven't finished it, that are, they can still apply again.
Right.
So, but I think, and maybe we need to clarify that also, that, and I understand exactly what Celeste is saying, but that this should be something, perhaps, that, that the committee reviews, or, or that the committee takes into consideration, is any funding that has not been expended, and make sure that there is legitimate reason for that money not being expended before a new application is, is accepted.
I, I think we need to be really careful, just because of the scrutiny, right, that the committee receives and this process receives. We need to be really careful, I think, about putting anything in writing, black and white, that states something so specific, and yet, that's not our intent. Because if our intent is something different, we should make that clear here, because what's going to happen is, the minute that you then allocate funding to a project that hasn't completed a project, somebody's going to be at the door, right? So, whatever it is our intent is, that's what we should say here.
And I, I would fully agree with that.
So, if, if the, if the money isn't expended on an application, at what point do we just cut, do we cut it off? Because you said, like, something about two years ago.
But there's always going to be special circumstances.
Right, I would think what would be reasonable would be not from the current fiscal year that we're in, but the prior, if there was a project on the books from the prior, you know, fiscal year.
Because you're, you're saying here, that it has to be shovel-ready. So we're assuming it's ready to go, and then you're, and it's not.
Right.
And then that means somebody else doesn't get the money. Okay.
And when we do say shovel-ready, are you saying that permits are ready to be pulled? So are we asking these agencies to go out and get permits before they even get funding allocated?
Ms. Marquez.
Rosalie Marquez, Chair. That's the reason why we, we request this change, is so that it wouldn't happen. That's, if they have everything shovel-ready, everything's ready to go, then there would be no delay. Happened in the past, they're not shovel-ready. And so that's the problem we have. So that's why we're saying, we'd like to have it now, so that way we wouldn't get into that trouble in the future.
Okay, so, so the wording on there is exactly what you guys want, is that, I'm assuming?
But what, I, I guess I'm asking, what is the definition of shovel-ready? Is that shovel-ready, I have a permit in hand?
Or you've had, or you've had all of the studies, if there are environmental studies, do you have all those done?
We have the proper zoning, you've gone through the planning process, that's a big issue. It's ready, you have plans, it's ready. It's ready to pull permits, let's put it that way.
So we're asking, we're asking these agencies to put a significant amount of money upfront for a project that may not even be funded?
Uh, Tim Seifert, we don't generally fund the whole project, we're a portion of the project. So they're, they're coming into this project fully aware what their costs are, and, and they're applying for this grant, but they're applying for other grants, and they have other monies. We've had some applicants come in and say, "We want to buy a piece of property, because we want to build this project, will you fund the pro, will you fund the property?" And they haven't done any research, they haven't done any, they've done a little bit of zoning, maybe talked to a couple planners, but they don't have anything in writing, they don't have anything planned for this project. It's going to be years before anything gets built on that property. And that's what we're trying to, we don't want that.
So I guess, that's the type of wording that I want to see in, you know, definitions of, of shovel-ready, that we, we need to make sure that it is a project, I mean, something like, a project that can be accomplished within the next funding cycle, or something along that line. I don't even think the "ara shovel-ready" definition had that, you know, permits were ready to be pulled. I, I-
No, I don't think that the "ara" grants really defined it too well. So, we could come up with some kind of language as far as how we want to define it.
As a term, but, no, I think we've been using it, and maybe misusing it, and, and maybe we do need to redefine that, but we, we just didn't want to get caught with a project. They didn't, haven't done their research, they haven't got their architect, they haven't got, they've got an idea, they've got a dream.
Fully, fully agree.
And I think that permits ready to be pulled, would it fall under a, a bigger definition of someone applying for a grant? Because they would know that, oh, we've got to get A, B, and C done. So if we don't, if we're not ready to get our permits pulled, then we can't proceed with the grant.
And, uh, Tim Seifert, and, and again, we would look at that in deliberations, and we would be looking at these different projects, and we would be looking at Eddis, who's all ready to go, and they've talked to the planners, they've got their permits, they're ready to, ready to pull, they've got their plans, this is a job that's viable, versus the guy that wants to buy a piece of property and, and probably put some low-income housing. So, so it, it's going to come to light, and, and the better prepared project, the more, the further along it is, the more apt we are to vote on it and fund it.
And shovel-ready, ready projects get priority, obviously. I mean, maybe that's the, maybe that's the phrase that we use.
Okay. And along that line, too, we've had problems in the past with, especially on our nonprofit facility projects, where they come in one year, and they ask for a little bit of money to do this, and then the next year, they want to do this, and they're all piecemeal. Instead of evaluating the condition of their facility upfront, and then applying, and maybe phasing it, but it, it seems that they don't really know what the condition of their facility is, you know, in total, and they haven't really evaluated it. So, that's another issue that the committee was concerned about. They don't want to see these piecemeal applications. They'd rather have an application that says, you know, this facility is in need of all of these repairs or upgrades, and, yes, there's a possibility there's not enough money to fund all of it at one time, but then, in the application form, we do allow for them to, to phase their project out, so. Also, this was a staff recommendation, that the application deadlines be staggered, and that we would require the capital and affordable housing projects to be submitted first, and then staff would separate out the city capital projects, kind of separate them out for you to review, and then you would have the opportunity to give the advisory committee some direction on, on the city projects that you want to see funded in the next funding cycle. And then, two weeks later, we would require the public service applications be submitted, so we would have a staggered, and that would help staff and the committee, because it would help us, rather than receiving all fifty applications on the same day at five o'clock. The other thing that the committee was requesting, to have structured questions for the site visits, and I believe there are a few committee members that wanted to possibly work on a list of the structured questions that they would like to, to ask of, of all of the applicants.
Christina Wonsanis, if I could clarify that, that definitely, you know, looking at things very literally at this point, right? So include some structured questions, so that we have a way to use those answers consistently and be able to gauge, plus also then include specific questions that we would ask one group, but wouldn't be appropriate for others, so just to clarify the language.
So I believe those are all their suggestions for changes. Are there any questions about that?
Any questions?
Well, we've always, we've always had the issue and the problem where some agencies, small, big, or large, are always struggling, and we know there's never enough money. But it's been sometimes suggested that some of the smaller projects, it's not going to help your agency, and do we give a bigger bang to somebody that can really make something happen? And I'll just use an example. Mr. Seifert's group needs ten, five thousand, and somebody else needs five thousand, and the reality is that probably Kelly's project with that larger amount is going to make much more of a significant impact in that area, rather than cutting the pie out where no one's being able to do a hell of a job, quite frankly. I don't know if you've discussed that, because it's always been agonizing for years that I've been involved in that. And, and I guess, right now, it seems to me in looking, and I have to say, I didn't go back and pull everything up, but a lot of the five thousand dollar funding didn't seem for an agency who's asked for thirty thousand versus somebody else that may do that. And, and again, I don't know if you discussed that in your deliberations, or if that could be a rec, you know, I, as cold-hearted as that seems to some agencies, it may be better to step up for one agency that can provide, you know, for Bob's problems versus Kelly's problems over here. I guess, as simple as I can put it.
Uh, Tim Seifert, Bob, what we have discussed, we've actually discussed that criteria on the public services, because we get so many requests.
That's what I'm saying.
We have so little money. We've, we've kind of been discussing the capital projects, which are usually a bigger, bigger house. And, and not only have we discussed it, but we also feel for the agencies, because twenty-five copies of all of their financial statements, twenty-five copies of this. This is an expensive grant, and it's, and it's a lot of reporting for them, and we've had a lot of feedback on the smaller grants from the agencies. It's, it's almost not worth it. They're, they're spending so much staff time trying to get, get these requirements to the city, that, that we have discussed on the public service side, and it's never passed, we've only ever discussed it, making like twenty grants, five thousand- it, making like 20 grants, 5,000 these, you know, minimum type of a grant, but we've never been able to have anyone agree to do that. So, we haven't, that's not part of the bylaws yet, but we have discussed it, and it's not a bad idea, and the agencies are having a hard time with small grants, and staff is having a hard time with small grants.
Well, I'll just say, years ago it was 20 grants, and now it's 48 or 50 that are coming in, and it's just, it's mind-boggling, and there just is not enough money.
And the amount that we're giving out has-
Is shrinking, that's all, I guess, that consideration, and I personally feel that that would probably be a smart move to make, whether it's this time or not, and I don't know whether I would ask for consensus from, you know, in recommending that, but it seems to me it's only logical to, the biggest bang for at least somebody to do a real positive job, rather than everyone struggling with a low amount of money and putting the time and energy in. I guess that's-
And maybe, you know, along those lines, I mean, maybe we do need to think about narrowing our focus on CDBG. One of the things that I talked to Celeste this afternoon about, and I maybe just throw this out that people can think about it during the break, is perhaps we should bifurcate our funding priorities between program service funds and capital funds, and have, you know, they are going to be similar, some of them are going to overlap, but I think it may be clearer if we have, okay, these are the priorities for public service funds, these are the specific priorities for the capital funds, both CDBG capitals as well, so. And they are, they do different, but we try and wrap them into this one. So, that's one of the things we might want to talk about, one of the things, and we might want to narrow our, what were those priorities, and make sure that we, okay, these are the programs that we're really going to focus on.
And I'd just like to follow up with Councilmember Boyz, I mean, Councilmember O'Rourke's comments, is that I think sometimes we lose sight, if we have an agency that's a large agency that has a large budget and maybe has a lot of programs, and they're coming in and asking for $5,000 for a program. And I think that sometimes we get in our head, well, they're an agency, they have this huge budget, this money isn't going to make a difference for them, when a lot of their funding is coming from other sources to fund a lot of those projects. They don't have a lot of money maybe sitting in the bank, they have a lot of money that's funding the other services they're providing, and by not getting this, what seems like a small amount in their large budget to do this program or this project, they're not going to be able to do it. So I think that we need to be mindful of that as well.
Tim, Tim Seifert. One of our questions that we do ask is, what will happen if you do not receive this money? And you'd be surprised, a lot of them, sometimes they say, "Well, we're not going to stop the program." We've had that answer actually more times than not, I was surprised. But, we do ask that question. If we're not able to give you the full amount or any, what's going to happen to this project? What's going to happen to your services? How is it going to affect you? So that is something that we are taking into deliberation.
Thank you.
And Alicia Glazius, and I want to follow up on Councilmember O'Rourke. When we do deliberations and we're looking at the small amounts, and sometimes people need matching, you know, they need the city support in order to get matching funds, and we evaluate all of that. What happened this last round is, you know, we go through the process, we look at where the money's going to help the most people and be the most beneficial. I'm going to speak only for myself. At city council, it felt like a public shaming for all of, you know, for the people coming up saying how we weren't funding them, and all of these people were going to go hungry, and, you know, when you look at what we gave them last year, I mean, it was going to help like one person throughout the whole year. And, and it was very, you know, it was very uncomfortable, and it was, to me, uncalled for, because we did, we spent hours, and we did the very best we could do, and we do put the money where we think we can get the, you know, benefit the most people.
I agree with you, wholeheartedly.
Any other, any other questions of city council?
Well, any questions from the city council? It brings to light that, I guess in the financial structure of things, and it seems to me that that question that Mr. Seifert brought up about, well, what's going to happen, it seems to me that I read in somebody's statement that they would take money from their reserves. And in my mind, it was, that's exactly why an agency has reserves, because this is an issue that if it were me, and I was trying to repair something, it would be done if I had the money in the bank. The reserves are evidently set aside for some issue, and I don't know in our financial statements, do we ask that, do you have reserves, where are they, and how much is? Is that an appropriate question?
Our application form, we ask for not only a budget for the program or the project, but also, there's another section in the application form that asks for the overall agency funding sources. And then it's also in the attached financial statement.
But that doesn't talk about reserves.
But the audited financial statements can be read.
But they're audited.
Yes.
Their audits.
Yeah, the audited financial statements.
It would be in the audit, in the audit or the financial statements.
Yes. Okay. Any questions, city council?
I had a conversation around the minimums and the maximums in the guidelines, I definitely think that makes our job much more difficult, and, you know, it's a hassle for nonprofits in trying to figure out, well, am I asking for too much, am I asking for too little? You know, the question around whether it's worth it. I think it's a really, that piece a lot, I mean, if we can do this, I think it's amazing. But I think that the piece around the minimums and the maximums, it's really also correlated with the five different sets of regulations and rules of priorities that prioritize everything, I mean, if you really look at it. And so that's, that's really, you know, we're also taking into consideration all the different groups and issues that we're trying to fund compared to the groups that are submitting applications for, it makes our work really, really challenging. And so if there's a way that we could narrow some of those down, I think that that would be really helpful for all of us, and I think also really helpful for the nonprofits, because if they see there's one little section, especially the one around youth, I think that one can mean so many different things. That then someone's thinking, well, it's saying youth on there, so I should apply, but it means so many different things, and it makes all of our work, I think, very difficult. So I would definitely recommend-
I agree.
I think that's, I think that's spot-on, that we really have to narrow our definitions for everybody's benefit.
So you're talking about the definitions or the priorities?
Talking about the priorities.
The priorities, okay.
The priorities.
Because there are certain priorities and regulations that we absolutely have to follow, and then we've got the specific, like, there's the city criteria for the CDBG, and then there was the city funding priorities, which then just really expands the pool of who we're supposed to recommend to.
I mean, like, for instance, on the first priority, prevent homelessness, address critical emergencies, at-risk youth, and special population needs, you know, I really think that we can take out, address, we can, we can just shorten that to, prevent homelessness, address critical emergencies of special population needs, which is going to include at-risk youth.
Except it doesn't specify it, so, you know.
Well, but we also have expanded educational and youth opportunities as one of the guidelines, too.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so.
Okay, are there any more questions at staff?
Any more questions at the committee?
And we were going to take a short break.
We are.
And there are refreshments for you.
Do you want to flip it to where it says break?
Yes.
So, okay, this is legitimate, we're going to take a break. Five minutes.
So, suck down any chocolate.
Oh my gosh, I know.
Are there any new?
And I haven't had it.
I'm sorry, are there any new people?
What? (laughing).
Alice, you need my gavel?
You're it. Okay, the party's over, you guys. We have to get serious again. Thank you, Celeste, Ms. Quayle Hudson. Anyway, so, Madam Clerk, we have requests to speak on their...
Yes, we do have requests to speak on this item.
We have six requests to speak. You can have three minutes, or you can cut it down. Mr. Allen?
Madam Mayor, speaking to the rest of the committee here, we're hoping that you will make an executive met order that Count Corry not leave the committee.
I think we can get a 5-0 vote on that, Mr. Allen. Do I have a second? Okay, I'll give your names, and you can just get over there, so it's close to the mic. Karen Corery, Jennifer McGovern, Judy Monte, Joyce Ellen Lippman, Morgan Benevito, and Fran Foreman.
Is this on? No. Oh, it is. Okay. My name is Karen Corery, and what I have to say probably isn't going to be real popular.
Then you can't say it.
Okay. All right, so then what I will start with is after being on this committee for eighteen years, this is one of the best, most diverse, most active committee that we've had at all at one time. So that's for all of you to know that. What I wanted to speak on is the attachments on the applications. I'm probably, I don't know, maybe the only one who wants all the attachments. I'm not on the committee anymore, so when I say "I" or "we," it's no more. The reason is last year, issues of accountability were brought up during the deliberations that twelve people out of fifteen did not know about, because they didn't have that information. Now, one of the problems is I don't think the deliberation process, which is open to the public, is the place to bring that up. And I think that this committee can figure out how to have a meeting before the deliberations on some of these things, because there were some serious things. We, no, the committee, has a fiduciary responsibility to the City of Santa Maria to do their due diligence on all applications. And I know it's a pain, and Celeste, I hope we're still friends for me saying that, but again, figure out how you can get that information, even if, use your paper, not the city's, to put, but I truly believe everybody should have all that information, not just their eight, the people that they're visiting. So, thank you, and I'm going home.
Jennifer McGovern, followed by Judy Monte.
Hi, I'm Jennifer McGovern, and I'm the president of the Housing Trust Fund of Santa Barbara County, and I wanted to make three or four comments this evening. The first, just to compliment this city, I work countywide, I also had a career for twenty-four years working in communities all around the state, and your process is exemplary, and your staff is amazing how much they do, and your committee is very hardworking. I think you have a superlative process here, and it's a very, very difficult thing in this era of diminishing resources to make choices. So I really appreciate all the work that everybody does. Our group is a nonprofit funding agency, and I wanted to put in a plug for affordable housing, not only because that's what we do, but because that's one of your top community priorities and needs. And it's more and more difficult these years to put these projects together, and I know you want shovel-ready things, but I think when you look at what it takes to put together a new construction project, we've got to have some flexibility on what that term means, and also to know that very often, these groups cannot package the financing on the projects without that first money in, which needs to come from the local community, so that you can get your state tax credits and your other types of funding. So it's complex, it's gotten more difficult, we know you're also under pressure from HUD for performance, but we've got to work together to find a way to support the groups that do the actual production of the housing that you need. My third comment has to do with partnerships, and I think that that's, you've had a good track record with that, to the extent you can do that, you can augment your resources. I'll give an example was our, our, can I wait? We received about eight hundred and forty thousand dollars from the State Department of Housing. We did a partnership with your city with some community block grant funds, and you provided closing cost grants, and we did down payment loans. We did twenty-one loans here in Santa Maria and got twenty-one low-income families into their first-time homeownership. And I think that's the type of project you want to see if you can duplicate in the future, whether it's homeownership or other, you know, constructions. You need to leverage your resources. I'm very pleased, the final comment is that you're going to be applying on your own to the state, and that you're out of consortium. I think you have a lot better odds. It's ironic, I'm on the county's capital committee now, and I really tried to champion North County, I was appointed for the North County because we had the loan program here. And, you know, I think it was sad how the county treated Santa Maria, but in a way, it's a blessing, because now you can be out from under that yoke.
Thank you, Ms. McGovern. Judy Monte, followed by Joyce Ellen Lippman.
Thank you, and since Karen Corery opened the door on the copies, for us, our financial audits and our financial reports, you're talking about fifty pages to an attachment, twenty-five copies, you're talking about twelve-hundred-and-fifty pages of paper just for attachments from one agency. I have an event committee that's gone to uploading all of our reports and stuff on a Google group. I am happy to provide you with electronic versions of everything you get in attachment, and you could sit here in your meeting and go to a link, to an onsite, and see everything you ever want, for all of you. And that would be my recommendation for you on the attachment. Please don't make us burn trees up to give you all the copies you need, but we're happy to have you have the information. I just wanted to express our appreciation that you continue to hold as a high priority the food needs of our community. Our numbers are holding strong on, unfortunately, holding strong on the need. I was talking with David Quayle from Catholic Charities this morning when he picked up food, and he said, "Sorry, he could not be here this evening," but we talked about his need. He says, "You know, we are seeing a high," I want to talk to two areas that we're seeing. One is drought impact, still very much drought impact. I asked him, I said, "So is that farm-ag-related kind of workers?" He says, "No, we're really seeing it across the drought impact, because of the cost of food in the store, is impacting everybody across all industries. It is having an impact on businesses and their dollars and what they're able to do." So that drought impact is out there for the people that are being served. And the other we're seeing is I'm seeing the numbers, the percentage of seniors that we served in this last fiscal year are double of at least two years ago, but I think maybe one year ago. We're now at seventeen percent seniors, and with ten thousand people in the United States every day turning sixty-five, you definitely want to be looking at where we're going with our seniors coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Joyce Ellen Lippman, followed by Morgan Benevito.
Well, I'm following Judy. My name is Joyce Lippman, and I work at the Area Agency on Aging, and we are concerned about seniors. Seniors are facing significant issues in just surviving in our community, and I mean, I can speak about both Santa Barbara County and San Luis Obispo County, but particularly, we did, we've done some needs assessment here in Santa Maria. Let me just share with you that the population of seniors is increasing. You've all seen the data. And our old people are getting older. So we need to remember that when we're thinking about how are we going to meet the needs of the frail and vulnerable elderly, because they're right here in our community. I also would agree with Jennifer, we need more affordable senior housing. People are leaving our community when they, when they don't, shouldn't have to, they're, you know, looking for another child who may be living in a more affordable community, but they've lived here for thirty years. That doesn't seem right. When we ask seniors, "What do you need?", they want to be safe, they want to live in their homes, under all circumstances, you know, bar nothing. On the other hand, you and I want them to live there safely. So when we look at some of the seniors who we come in contact with through Adult Protective Services, our own in-home care programs, et cetera, et cetera, these are people who are not eating properly, who are seriously impaired, and yet, I'm sorry. We still, should I just speak?
You can wait, you can wait till she's...
Oh, you can wait, okay.
Yeah.
My mother usually makes me shout. You know, we're still finding seniors who are living in filth, who are hungry, who are unable to care for themselves. And we need to be using all of the public services to make sure that this isn't happening in our community. We need expanded transportation, we need affordable housing, and we need affordable assisted living. And that's a huge issue that we need to face. And I guess that's probably my two minutes, and, but I just want to leave you with the thought that what... thought that what, I know that seniors are a priority, I know that vulnerable, at-risk seniors are a priority. Our, I don't have an exact number, but our community is filled with seniors who do not want to be found, but who are out here, and we're trying to find them and get them connected to services that are already above their capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce.
Good evening, I'm Morgan Benavio of People's Self-Help Housing. First want to thank the council and the committee for having this coordination event. I think it will help lend some certainty to applicants, if we can iron out some of the things that maybe were an issue last time. I also want to make mention of the priority list, there's talk about what priorities to fund. Staff puts out a needs assessment survey every year that has, it's basically a direct poll to the community, that says what are the needs, and that's a great tool that I think you should take a look at when assessing your priorities. I do want to make mention of the application process, I know that Judy mentioned the 25 copies, I would reiterate that. Maybe we can find a combination of some hard copy and submit a CD with everything on it as well. We do that to the Tax Credit Allocation Committee, it works out pretty well. I'd be happy to talk to staff about that process and how it works. I can't imagine receiving 25 binders from 30, 40 applicants where you're going to put them all. As far as shovel-ready goes, we work in affordable housing at People's Self-Help Housing, and it's a longer timeline. And I'm glad to see that you're kind of splitting up capital projects from service projects, but comparing a new 40-unit apartment complex and the timeframe that it takes to make that happen versus, say, a new flooring installation, it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison or other smaller capital projects. So I hope there's some flexibility there with the council and the committee in how to evaluate shovel-ready and how to define it. Typically, in funding, we see shovel-ready defined as maybe entitlements or complete, but not building permits. Building permits would entail hundreds of thousands of dollars of expense upfront on the part of the applicant, with no guarantee of getting funding. And as Jennifer mentioned, your funding source is one of the first in that we leveraged to get other funding sources. So we're really relying on you to fund us earlier in the process, rather than later in the process. And along those lines, HUD recognizes that as well, and there's strict timelines that HUD puts on, CDBG and Home. We're at risk, we have to get these projects completed within a timeframe. So HUD recognizes that, but those timeframes are, I think, four years for Home and five years for CDBG. So they recognize that there is a certain amount of time that it takes to do new construction, but it's not indefinite. So we know that those deadlines are, we work towards them. And CDBG also allows for acquisition, which is a recognition on CDBG's part that, you know, there won't be a project. Acquisition is raw land, or perhaps a dilapidated building, for example. So you won't necessarily have a completed project shovel-ready for acquisition. So I think within the HUD guidelines, there are a couple little exceptions that you want to keep in mind when you're thinking about this shovel-ready term. So with that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Fran Foreman.
Good evening. My name is Fran Foreman, and I'm the executive director of the Community Action Commission of Santa Barbara County. We are a private nonprofit organization. We're countywide, and most of the services that we deliver are here in Santa Maria. Of the 400 staff that we have, 220 of them live and work here in the city of Santa Maria. I want to talk a little bit about the priorities, and, but before I do that, I'm going to just take a second and the opportunity, because I have this great audience, just to tell you about us here in the city of Santa Maria. We have 600 children enrolled in Head Start at 13 centers, including at the Superior Court. 320 families were helped with utility assistance, 306 families had their homes weatherized, using private contractors, licensed contractors here from Santa Maria. But the area that I was really asking you to prioritize are seniors. Each day, we serve 300 seniors, 150 at several centers, and 150 get meals delivered into their homes. And yes, we are one of those large nonprofits that maybe the sense is, is that $5,000 wouldn't help us, but it would desperately help us. The funding that we get to feed the seniors only comes one-third of the funding, so we have to raise funds and ask for donations and ask for the partnership with the city. So I am asking that you prioritize seniors. And then, I hope that we could also, you know, I'd like to hope, make a deal with you. There happens to be a lot of waste, you might not know this, from the federal government. And we have a federal grant also, and we have to write also a community assessment that looks at poverty in communities. And we convene, we have public hearings, we invite people, we do a community assessment, and here is a 48-page document that a good deal of it is focused on Santa Maria, and we had a public hearing, a lot of people came. I propose that we work together in developing priorities, because why should we be doing double the work? This is available online, and I leave my card here, you could look at our website and read this and look at this. And hopefully, we could work together in developing priorities, because each of us has to come up with our plan, as though we're not affected by each other. So that's my idea, and I hope that you take me up on this. And I'm going to leave this copy with Celeste. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Foreman.
Thank you.
Celeste, could you put the changes back up on the, let's attack that first? Okay, we've heard from the public, let's bring this back to, I think we probably have beat this to death already, but it, does the committee have any other comments on this or anything else they would like to say? Okay, let's bring it back to the council. Any of these suggestions for change? The only thing I have on my notes is maybe defined shovel-ready, and Tim, I think you said that we could do that, that you guys could do that, the definition for shovel-ready.
Do we, could we get that up on the screen? So, I'm still not clear on revised organizational structure. What is that asking for, just an organization chart of each of the applicants?
That was already in the application, and we were asking for a copy of the organizational chart to be submitted, but the section, what we were asking here was just to revise that section, to include the employees of the applicant, as well as any independent contractors that are working for them.
On the organizational structure?
Mm-hmm.
On the organizational structure? On the organizational chart?
The organizational structure section asks for a number of employees, what their classifications are, how many are working in that classification, and the total number working for the agency, and then the organizational chart, so you can have a sense of, you know, how many people are working for the agency and at what level, and, and in that way, the committee can get somewhat a sense of, okay, is this agency top-heavy, or, you know, or do they?
Fiduciary stuff.
You know.
Are you asking for salaries of individual employees?
No.
Okay.
It's by title, by position, no. Not of, not of specific employees, no.
I guess I would agree with the mayor that the shovel-ready, I think if we had a little better definition on that, I think Morgan was much more eloquent than I, but said exactly what I was trying to say. As far as shovel-ready, shovel-ready may be entirely different for a large project than it is for a very, very small project. The requiring of two bids, I think, or requiring of three bids, I think is, three bids, you know, I think we need to add some flexibility in that. I don't know how we do it recommending, you know, three bids will certainly get priority and will go to the top of the pile, or however we want to call it, but have some flexibility in there when there just is not those bids available. And then again, that unexpended allocation, I think that, you know, we need to be a little bit careful, because once we get things in writing, you know, memories start fading, and believe it or not, people sometimes retire, and new people come on the committee, and all of a sudden, you know, that is taken very, very literally. So I think, like Morgan says, sometimes this can take three and four years before some of those funds get expended, but they're still in compliance, so. But other than that, I'm good with pretty much everything else on there.
My only kind of question or observation.
Kelly, okay, that's Kelly.
Sorry, Kelly White. Is what, what's the plan moving forward to guarantee any of this? I mean, we require most of these things in some form on these applications, and frequently the applications are incomplete. So, like for the piecemeal requests, for example, you do extensive pre-application workshop, your workshop is super thorough. I mean, there's just, this question is this, you need to answer it like this. I mean, it's really thorough, and still people don't do it right. So what if we get a piecemeal request? Does it just, we don't review it, or we just use this as criteria? If they didn't do their application in this way, it gets weighted less? I mean, there's, there's going to be bad applications, especially this first year when these changes are put in place. What force of law does any of this have?
Well, in the past, when there has been an application that has been unresponsive, let's say, you know, a number of sections are not completed, we have taken it back to the committee, you know, staff can recommend that this application is incomplete and should not be accepted. And we've usually had a, like, a committee of three from the committee that will review that. We didn't have that in this last year, or the last two years, I don't think. Beyond that, it's going to be up to the committee when they're reviewing the application. It's a competitive process, you know, if the application is not properly filled out, I mean, that's going to be something you're going to judge that application on when the committee reviews their applications. As far as piecemeal requests, what we were talking about there is that when an agency, and we're talking about capital projects, an agency comes in and they ask to do a little bit of work here, and then the next year, they come in and ask for another little project in, you know, the same facility, instead of evaluating the condition of the whole facility and asking for it at one time.
But that's going to happen. I mean, that is, we're going to get applications like that. So in your, in your pre-application workshop, you're going to stress that, obviously, because I know how you run your workshop, but you're still going to get those applications. So we just are now authorized to not take them as seriously because they didn't follow these guidelines, or what's our, what's the usage of this new?
If I could, if I could kind of answer that, because in the process I do for the nonprofit I work for, we do submit to a grant person, and it's all filled out online, you upload everything, but they will let you know if something isn't appropriate, and they give you one chance to let you know if something's not appropriate. And if you don't answer it, or you don't answer it correctly, boom, you're out. That's just the way it is. Because it's such a competitive process that we can't, you can't hold somebody's hand and walk them through the process where somebody else has completely submitted. So I would say that you just disqualify them.
Madam Mayor, if I could, if I could.
Go ahead, Ms. Sunege.
So, I mean, I remember back in the day, as somebody who worked for a nonprofit for 20 years, who applied to CDBG, both for capital and services, given the level of information you get from staff at the onset. In those days, if your application wasn't complete, it was kicked out of the pile. There was no question, there was no going back, there was no second chance. You attended the pre-application, staff was always available to answer questions, and the thought process, I guess, back then was, if you weren't capable of submitting an application that met the guidelines, given all the support, if you had a question, you just called them, and they were always there. So I'm just, I'm concerned that what we're doing is creating these things based on a few situations that we have with agencies who aren't getting us three bids and other things, which is going to create a lot more work for two staff people who are already swamped. And is it necessary? I mean, is it necessary? Is it, you get the training, the staff is available to answer your questions, you can have them preview your application and let you know, at least in the old days, you could. And so if you submit an application that's not complete, it gets kicked out of the pile, period. I mean, we don't have staffing to call people and follow up, and if your, if your agency doesn't have the level of expertise to be able to do the application with all of the support, then maybe you don't deserve funding.
Ms. Quayle, did you want to say something?
We have encouraged applicants to submit their application to us before the deadline. We will help them review it, and, you know, if there are things missing or whatever, then we'll advise them, we'll provide technical assistance. Not one hour before the application is due, but we've encouraged them to do that.
It doesn't happen, does it?
So, but if clearly, as an example, if an applicant meet, cannot meet the deadline, I mean, you know, clearly, the application is not responsive, then, yes, I agree, I mean, well, first of all, they have to meet the deadline, we will not accept it.
Great.
But we should have that same criteria for all of the requirements. You meet all of the requirements, or your application isn't, I mean, that would be what I would suggest.
Absolutely. Great.
Greg, I think this is going to go, this is exactly the committee's biggest concern. We care about these ladies, they do a superlative job, I'm echoing what was said earlier, but part of our concern is...
Oh, you need to, Greg, you need to talk into the mic, because we have to record you.
Part of our concern is that we protect them, and I think, if you could, if you said, you know, you don't need all of these requirements, but you gave us to give, or give them the permission to say, "I'm sorry, this application doesn't meet the deadline, it doesn't meet the requirements, it's going in the round file," I think that would make us feel better. The other thing that's coming up, and I think, Ms. Boyson was good at pointing this out, is a lot of these things can be determined in the deliberations, and I think that's part of what we're doing, but one of our concerns is that we are given the authority to say no, because some of these things that we said aren't too bad. So, I would say that was part of my concern. Do we, we have your back, you have our back. You have our back.
Mrs. Frost.
I just want to comment on one aspect of the required documents, and it is something that falls very close to my home with an MBA, is the financials. In the packet of seven or eight organizations that we got, more than half of them did not have current audited financials, and there was no explanation as to why. And some of them, the audited financials that they submitted were two or three years old. So this would include that, if we are going to play hardball and say, "You're adults, we're adults, this is the rules." adults, this is the rules and this is what's going to happen, so everybody's on the same playing field and we designate the consequences and everything. It's got to be to all of the attachments, not just picking and choosing, well, these are more important than others, or we need to clarify that. Any organization should have audited financials, they have to submit their, what is the one to the-
990.
Yeah, five and a half months after their fiscal year end.
Well, actually-
Or extension.
Audited, audited financial statements for nonprofit can be up to 10 and a half months after the final year.
Because they can get the extensions. But then I would hope there would be, on the federal reports and the state reports, extensions applied for, for filing those. The audited financials, of course, probably would have to be done before those could be filed because you'd want to have that information.
Well, and this would be for organizations that are required to have audit.
Right.
Not everybody needs, not everybody has to have an audit.
And that would be a stipulation, that if they didn't, then you have, audited financials don't apply. But when they do, it's got to be the same level playing field for all of them. And I understand what we're saying about having some flexibility in looking at the bidding process, having some flexibility when looking at the definition of shovel-ready. But there are some things that there's kind of not a lot of wiggle room. They're either-
No, and I understand.
And I think, Judy, what you're pointing out is, it's not so much being hard and fast, it's when they're completely ignored.
Right.
That's the problem. So if, if an applicant has a valid reason why they don't have X or they can't provide Y, at least they've acknowledged they've been asked for it and this is my answer.
Right.
But so many of the applications are a little tight, a little loose.
Right.
And we're not tough about it.
And I think we saw exactly that situation that Judy Frost is talking about in Lompoc, with Lompoc Public and Community Development Corporation. For some reason, oh geez, we don't have our audited financial statements that are required or required or required, and eventually they went bankrupt and, you know, caused a tremendous fallback. No, I would agree that any statutory requirement, you know, we have to have those same requirements for our CDBG application.
Okay, okay. I'm going to, we're pretty much closed for public comments, so we're closed for the committee unless we want to ask questions. So I want the council to decide what we want to do on, on these. So go ahead, Mr. O'Rourke.
Well, I, I was just going to say, it's kind of like us reporting to HUD. Well, a couple of things we skipped and just, don't worry about it and we'll catch you next year, kind of thing. Ain't going to happen, shouldn't happen. That's the transparency factor.
So, if-
Ms. Sunnega, go ahead. So if I was going to go down the list, I would say, require copies of all attachments, the revised organizational structure, something around bids, maybe a further, maybe we need a further conversation amongst the committee and come back to us. I would say maybe two bids required, three preferable, if we wanted to do something like that. I think we need to define what shovel-ready means, so everybody's really clear on what that means. We have to have clear, a clear definition of that for applicants. Require a site plan, good. No application of previous unexpended, I think that requires a conversation, a follow-up conversation like three bids, like what does that mean? Wonder if there was something out of their control that they had no ability to control, either some disaster, I don't know what it is. But there may be something that was out of their control, not just that they're sitting on the money or they're not moving forward, or they just, they don't have, Celeste talked about, they don't have staff, they have the sophistication to manage a project. So maybe more discussion about that. I think no piecemeal requests, just a definition of what that means, that, you know, if you're coming to ask for, you know, money to remodel a bathroom, you're going to need a bathroom remodeled next, you know, next year, something like that. Stagger applications is awesome, I think that's great for staff and certainly for us. And then I like the idea of a number of structured questions for every single site visit, and then I think we should determine a number of questions for each site based on their project and their application. So if it's going to be four structured questions for a site visit and then three optional questions, so that each site visit has the same amount of optional questions, even though they're going to be different and specific to their site.
Okay. Ms., Ms. Waterfield.
Okay, wow. This is, this is a lot to consume here. This is my first introduction to the CDBG, but I do want, I do want to make a comment in regards to the workshop. And I'm looking at it as an applicant because that's how I, I've become familiar with, with the grant process. I believe that in the workshop, and what I hear is that Celeste does an excellent job of explaining to the applicants what is required of them. So if I, as an applicant, would go to a workshop, Celeste, I believe that you will be able to define exactly where the applicants lie of whether or not they are able to submit an application or not. You're able to define through what the council is, and the committee is telling you. So if I were to say that I would come up here and I need money for, I don't know, for a, a public safety program, I'm going to be looking at this going, hmm, I don't know if this is the right place for me to submit my grant. So I, I think with you doing the workshop with the applicants, that they, they would become very aware of, you know, do I submit or do I not submit? And they're going to know their criteria of exactly what to do on this.
I'm sorry, Mayor, can I add one more thing? I'm sorry, and I promise I won't do it again. I think that in addition to this, at this point, before we leave here tonight, I would like to see us direct staff that if an application is not complete, that it doesn't get considered. It doesn't go to the committee, it doesn't go any further, they get a nice letter saying, we're really sorry to inform you, and that's it. No more staff time is committed to that, no more committee time is committed to those. Now I'm done, I promise.
That's what you're saying. I know, I know. And do you have anything else?
Well, and, and I believe your questions that you ask, that are presented to the applicant are very easy to, to answer. I mean, it's, I mean, just going by, again, my experience of applying, I understand exactly what they're looking for. So I, when, I think it was Judy that said some of them, or maybe it was Kelly that said, you know, some of them are just not even recognized or just flippant with their questions. That's kind of hard to understand because they're specific, they're very specific, and those would just be tossed out.
Let me pay for them. Okay. You've commented, right? Okay. We have, we've had different comments on the copies of attachments, and I think it's important that everybody get those attachments, but however they get, they may just want to get them scanned and that's fine. And if someone says, I don't even want it, I want to come in and read it in the binder, that's, I don't care how they do it. I just want them to be available for them. I'm fine and I, I like to require three bids and, and if that can't happen, then there's an explanation and it comes back to, I have a lot of confidence in the committee and they will do the right thing. And maybe a little bit more definition on the shovel-ready. And I do like the, and I think the reason you have put these together is because you've seen a need. It's not that you're pulling them out of the sky. And that, that to me is really important. No new application of previously unexpended allocation. I, I like that and I think it should stay. And I would have, I was going to say, the applications, that's the only thing that bothered me last time, the applications need to be complete and that's going to make your job a lot easier, because that puts the onus on the applicant and certainly their jobs a lot easier. And that means they have to, if you say five o'clock on a Friday night, that's when they, or a Thursday night, they're not coming in eight o'clock on Friday. If you say that everything has to be filled out, complete, I mean, we all do this, we get online and fill out applications and it pops back up when you don't do it right, we all know that. And, and especially like the financials, I, I think that's extremely important. All those have to be filled out and be complete.
I guarantee if they miss one question, it's thrown out next year, they're not going to miss it. They're going to, they're going to complete the process.
Okay. Have, we given you direction?
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to go back and cover the priorities again.
Oh, no, I mean, just on, just on this. I'm going to do that. So-
We, we have a suggestion. Would you like the committee then, based on the discussion here, in your direction to revisit this and define some of these-
Sure.
-suggestions? And then we'll come back to council with the-
That sounds great.
With a report on that.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes. Oh, Mr. Hayden?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. May I make a suggestion that the committee, it sounded like you have nine suggestions for change. There was consensus on five of those items. There was consensus that you needed some type of more clarification on four of them, whether it was to more discussion, clearly defined, or clarify, what do you mean by require three bids? What do you mean by must be shovel-ready? What do you mean by no new applications of previously unexpected allocations? And then no piecemeal requests? May I make the suggestion that when staff goes back and discusses this with the committee, that they focus on those four? Because those are where the clarification is needed, rather than dealing with all nine.
Yes, yes. Now, you want to go into the priorities? And that's attachment D, Celeste?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, who wants to start?
Well, Madam Mayor, I'd be-
This is taking longer than a regular council meeting. Go ahead, Ms. Boyson.
As it should. These are very important, very important things that, and these are some of the most important things that we do all year. So I think it should take longer than a regular council meeting. And Madam Mayor, I'd also invite, personally, I'd like to invite any input that the committee may have on some of these things too, as we go through them. What, one, I would like to see us bifurcate the capital and the service priorities, so that, you know, we have some of these things for capital that are very specific, you know, providing affordable housing, expanding economic opportunities, revitalizing existing neighborhoods, some of these things are, you know, can be very specific to, to, to the capital projects. Whereas I think from the program side, really, we're looking at, at one and two. Preventing homelessness, addressing critical emergencies, and, and expanding educational and youth opportunities. My suggestion, as we talked about right before the break, would be to narrow our definition on number one, under program services, to prevent homelessness, address critical emergencies and of special population needs, which would include at-risk youth. And we certainly do have, as the number two priority, expand educational and youth opportunities. I'm, I'm thinking that that would give more very specific direction to the, to the committee.
Okay. Mr. O'Rourke, any comments?
No, I, I think that dropping that, at-risk, oh, I'm sorry, to, to change that first line, I think is Councilman Boyson suggested, and then the second point there would, would be all encompassing of that in particular. You know, that's kind of diluted both, both of those. How about the idea of bifurcating the capital and- Bifurcating, that's it. Dividing by two.
Ms. Sunnega?
So I, yeah, I would definitely, you know, support the idea of bifurcating. I think that's a good, I think that's a good strategy. I know that when I met with the committee after, you know, the last city council meeting, and I spent, I think, a couple of hours with you, which I really appreciated, I want to thank you again for that. One of the things I heard, I think consistently through our meeting, was the difficulty you were having with so many priorities and making judgments about, we've got five priorities here, you know, each council member has, you know, a priority maybe that is specific to them or that they have a certain passion for. And I could really hear from you guys, the difficulty you had in trying to do that. So given some of that feedback, I'm, I would like to suggest that we look at these five priorities and narrow them down to three. Maybe, you know, just, or, or have the five, you know, maybe reprioritize them and have a direction to the committee that you focus on the first three. Given the limited amount of money that we have, you know, I, I remember that you said, you know, trying to, you know, fund five separate priorities with this little bit of money was just really, really difficult for you. So I would suggest that we limit it to three and maybe have two optional if we don't want to try to get rid of. And, and the other thing is, is this, you know, it's not in stone, so maybe it's something we revisit every two years or something like that. As the economy changes, what's a priority today may not be a priority in two years from now. So we can just have a calendar where every two years we come back maybe and look at it. Because, you know, things change, economies change, needs changes, the disaster happens and all of a sudden there's something else that's priority. But I think having five priorities is, is too much, it's too much for the committee.
Well, Ms. Sunnega, I hate to jump in, but I was just going to say, if you, if you do bifurcate those, I mean, you would have basically two or three for each, for each category.
Yeah. Let me ask you something, Celeste. Critical emergency, I guess I really need a definition on that, because what is that critical, like when the town center inn burnt down?
Yes. When we're looking at critical emergency, we're looking at mostly food, shelter, clothing, or are they, or it could be a safety issue, a victim of crime, that type of thing. But critical emergency is more food, shelter, clothing. That, that was in your other set of criteria.
Yeah.
That's where that came from.
Because, okay.
And with the special population needs, I mean, most of what is being funded there is really for emergency needs. You know, it, it could be, you know, delivering meals to, to elderly, you know, they're not going to be fed unless they get the meals delivered to them.
I think one thing we heard over and over tonight is food is very, very important. I'm, you know, I'm not diminishing the importance of other things, but food is extremely important. But what we don't have there, that on number one, special population needs, I think the seniors need to be there and the youth need to be there. Now-
Yeah.
Prevent homelessness, I'm not sure is that, should that be capital or, and/or programs? Because we've had this prevent homelessness and, and we see what's happening in Santa Maria and we've seen what's happened with Prop 47 coming in and what it's done, and that's impacted us. AB 109 has impacted us, so, I don't know, I'm just-
Are you suggesting that none of our programs are preventing homelessness? Madam Mayor-
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that we probably, we do have programs that have prevented homelessness, but because of the impact of Prop 47 and AB 109, we're getting more homelessness.
And which-
Which is why we need more program.
Which requires that we have even more.
Well, and that need, that's mental health and that's-
Exactly.
Drug stuff. And I know, I know all that. But at the same time, at, I guess my priority will be youth. And so you have all these people coming out of prisons that are being emptied into our streets and that's all over California. I still think my priority is youth before these, these homeless people.
And, and my priority is always going to be the safety net. I, you know, I would love to be able to, you know, rebuild the, the dam, but, you know, the problem is, we're, we're in that swamp and the alligators are all around us.
Yeah, I know, but if you don't take care of the kids, they are going to be the homeless and they are going to be the ones in, in prisons. And so that's, that's my priority. Plus that we have to make sure that our seniors, because they're closed in, a lot of them, and they have to be taken care of and they have to be fed. But we don't have enough money and I know to do all this, but when we're changing around our priorities, I, I just, those are my priorities, will be the youth and the seniors.
It's, it's, I think that-
One moment, one moment. Ms. Waterfield, I speak.
Thank you. My priority is the food and the elderly. I've, you know, we, we do have to take care of the, of the elderly, but I also agree with the youth, because we can't lose the youth at this point. The mayor brings up an excellent point in regards to Proposition 47. And I've done some investigating in regards to what's going on throughout California with the homeless issues. The men's colony has 500 empty beds, because there are letting out people of prison easy. What we don't know in regards to our homeless, and I don't know, maybe Mr. Boyton or Councilman Boyton can address this, but when the homeless show up and now they're showing up- Boyton, can address this, but, when the homeless show up, and now they're showing up quite a bit, are they, do we know if they're, uh, pedophiles? Do we know if they're sexual abusers? You know, do we know if they have a drug problem? We're, we're bringing a culture into the city of Santa Maria that is going to mix, mix with our youth. And there's been some suggestions as, well, let's, you know, let's build a place and put them in the poverty section of Santa Maria. I don't agree with that. You know, you've, you've got to be able to think, do you want them next to where you live? And, if you don't, then we're darn sure not going to put them next to, you know, the most poverty part of Santa Maria. So, we need to come up with a good solution for this, and we need to be able to try to monitor who they are. A lot of this has to do with the mental illness. And yes, we are working on the project right now for the mental illness, but that won't happen for another two years. So, it's just, uh, it's crazy times that we're living in, especially with Proposition 47, and, uh, demeaning the, uh, the felons into misdemeanors, and allowing the prisoner, the prisoners to come out of prison, and filling up the population. I get calls all the time from constituents saying, "You got to help me out, you've got to help me out, we have homeless right here." And they're, they are crying out for help, the residents. So, it's a, you know, it's a tough situation that we're in, but, um, the youth is something that I would like to preserve in the city of Santa Maria, but most importantly to me, would be to make sure we get the, the elderly fed, and have the, enough food to provide for them as well. So, those are my priorities.
You know, in our demographics, it's probably thirty, thirty-three percent of our population is the youth. But, and I'm talking eighteen years and younger. We have a huge, huge y- population. They're not as old as we are around here. Ms. Sunega?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I mean, I just, I think sometimes there's, I appreciate, um, Councilmember Waterfield's comments, but the majority of the homeless in our family, quite, in our community, quite frankly, are families with children and veterans. They're not people who are getting released from prison, although I know that we see an influx of that. But, if you look at any of the data that's being collected by anybody, countywide, who's doing work with homelessness, the people in our community who are homeless are families with children and veterans. And so, if we look at our priorities, and certainly, I've got fourteen grandchildren, and one great-grandchild, and I'm, you know, the youth of our community are important to me as well. But, if we look at, let's address the issue of homelessness, and some people brought up tonight the concern about now, we have seniors who are becoming homeless as well. If we look at, out of our five priorities, we've got provide affordable housing, which is going to deal with homelessness. We've got expand, um, economic opportunities, which is going to help those families who become homeless, because they're not working, and they've lost economic opportunities. And then even revitalizing our neighborhoods to create a place where, you know, people can live and be safe, are, are important. And I'm not saying that working with youth aren't important, I have a huge commitment to the youth in our community, but our work with youth is really prevention, and a lot of that work can happen through the schools, in the school districts. And, um, a lot of it happens, you know, what we're talking about is, you know, encourage literacy, that should, you know, that happens in schools, academic performance happens in schools, those kinds of things. So, you know, and, and I know that when I met with the committee, this is part of what you talked about, this is part of what you shared with me. It's like, you know, we, you have five people here who can agree, right, who all have, you know, Jack and I probably, homelessness is a big issue, Eda obviously has already said seniors, they're a concern for me. Mayor has said, what do you do with that? Like, how do you then make this decision with five priorities? And that's part of what you said, how do we do it? You're all telling us something different. So, yeah, I mean, I think that, looking at the homeless issue, which is huge, I mean, we're investing a lot of resources in the homeless issue. The other thing is, is that the programs that are dealing with the homeless leverage so much money, like, if you, if we took Good Samaritan program as an example, I mean, the amount of money they get from CDBG is a small amount of money, but they're bringing in so much federal dollars to address this issue. It's like, we, you know, there has to be some consideration too, about those agencies that may have, be big agencies that have huge budgets, but they're leveraging a lot of that money that you're giving them, times ten, to, to, you know, to address the issues So, I, I feel like the work with youth, while it's important, is really preventative work, and we need to stick our finger in the hole that's in the dam, where the water's coming out, and fix that first, before we look at trying to prevent, you know, do prevention work. And I'm sorry, Mayor.
And, Madam Mayor, if I may-
Yes, Mr. Boyson.
Just to piggyback on that, I, you know, we, we just can't be everything to everybody. If, you know, we're not going to solve, mental health is not, the mental health problems are not going to be solved through-
No.
-our CDBG grant.
No, I know that.
I think we really have to narrow what we specifically want to target with the CDBG grant. And I think that the items that, um, Mrs. Waterfield comes, comes up with, that, yeah, we, we don't want to get any more phone calls from our constituents, we want to be more effective, we want to be putting money into, uh, case managers being, going out and doing street outreach for these homeless, to get them off the streets, and to get them into the shelter. Every person that we bring into our shelters in Santa Maria, whether it be Good Sam or Central Coast Rescue Mission, uh, everyone is drug tested, everyone is, is background checked, um, as, uh, for, as far as Megan's Law and that sort of thing. I mean, these are people that want to get out of the cycle, and there is, you know, we, we just, we need to be able to take these families, and most, as Ms. Sunega says, most of them are families. We have twenty-nine people, twenty-nine children in our emergency shelter tonight. Twenty-nine in, in the emergency shelter. That doesn't include our family transition shelter, that doesn't include the permanent housing that we have. These are the folks that we, I think we really need to focus on. And you're right, we need to provide food. Certainly, uh, I think under special population needs, that, uh, that can be expanded to the seniors and, and at-risk youth. But, I, I think we have to give that flexibility to the CDBG committee, to be able to look and see what those critical emergencies are at the time, and, and, uh, determine the, the proper dividing of the, of the, of the money, for those organizations that are going to address those, the, uh, the best.
Madam Mayor, I guess, part of the problem that I see here, myself personally, in trying to listen to all this, is the bifurcation. We're talking about a hell of a lot of difference between a capital project to home, to housed families, and those kinds of things, versus food at the homeless shelter, or programs that you're doing. And the hell of the pot is, the one pot is getting smaller, well, they're all getting smaller, but the housing and all those other needs, there's a chunk there. And I don't know if I'm getting any California agree with that, versus a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to spread out for your program that's going to feed somebody, you're going to do this, you're going to do that. And, oh, by the way, we're going to help youth, in some fashion. Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, blah, 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 and those kinds of preventive things, getting kids off the streets. So, the, the homeless guys out and around, aren't going to go anyplace, because this place is full. There's also that part of the equation, in my mind, to how do we get those people, maybe to their own families? Or some process, so they can stop Bobby O'Rourke sleeping in the back of Joe's Bar, out of there and doing something. And part of that is, the city's safety net of us taking the command. Jack's group, don't go and come out and find Bobby in the back of Joe's Bar, it's our cops, it's our court enforcement, and it's all the others. So, that's part of the equation, in my mind, to help stem that flow, and then I think the kids then don't have that influence of, God, we, you know, you're not going to send your seventeen-year-old daughter down to Abel Maldonado Center, when you've got guys laying out front, sleeping, and those kinds of things. So, you know, it, we're all torn, but I guess I would like to maybe change those to a couple of three things, and we identify, okay. In this category of programs, this is what we want. The capital expenditure stuff, which also includes city projects, then that's where we can address the city's responsibility of public safety, and all those other kinds of things that, that go along with that. I don't know if that makes any sense, but it, it seems to be my mentality about that, that we can provide that, à la Oakley Park. Now, that's, you know, you're all saying it's for families, it's really for kids, I mean, soccer field, us adults used to play soccer and things, you've got a beautiful playground, all those things. That's nurturing a neighborhood, and if we don't have a way to keep homeless from sleeping there, it, it's all mute. And I don't think we can build enough facilities for homeless. You know, we've got families out there that are struggling to maintain, and I don't know, that's not a program out of the service providers' package. I don't see it that way. Maybe I'm wrong.
So, so what if we, I, I'm just-
Go ahead.
Throwing it out here. Would, and, and I'll, I'll make this as a motion, to change the priorities for program service, uh, funding to two priorities. One, to be prevent homelessness, address critical emergency, and special population needs, and two, to expand educational and youth opportunities. And I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Jack, say that again, please.
Okay, so-
I was going to say, read that back.
So, this would be for the priorities, city funding priorities, under program services, would be two items, that are direction to the CDBG committee. One, to prevent homelessness, address critical emergency and special population needs, and two, to expand educational and youth opportunities.
So-
Under program.
Mayor?
Under program.
Yes, Ms. Sunega?
So, can I just clarify, I'm, is there a need to include in special population seniors? Do we want to actually name-
If you include youth and seniors.
Well, we're including youth, though, in, in two. So, we've got youth covered in two. So, if we, if we take youth out of one, and I, I understand special populations, I'm just, given the comments that we had tonight, do we want to earmark, or we just want to leave it? I'm just offering as a topic for discussion.
But I'm, but I'm thinking more that, uh, special population needs is a definition. A special population is defined as, you know, low-income seniors, or it's defined as-
Oh, okay. I see what you're, I see what you're saying.
Whatever may be the-
Yeah. Yeah.
Developmentally disabled adults. I, I'm not sure what, right.
Madam Mayor? Um, if you look at your detailed list of priorities, you really have nine priorities on here.
Right.
Because the top priority has three, the second priority, three. Um, actually, I do not recall, there are very few applications that come in, and the committee can correct me if I'm wrong, that actually even qualify under number two priority, expand educational youth opportunities, because we have a, a separate priority for at-risk youth, and most of those applications, um, fall under that priority. Um, the number two priority, um, you know, that would be more of an activity that's, you know, academic, or, or purely recreational, but, you know, most of our youth-
Are, yeah.
Can fall under at-risk youth.
So, you're saying number one is good as-is?
Right.
Well-
Well, or, or do you want to separate those out as separate priorities that are under number one? Because they really are three different, you know-
Mayor?
I already said it.
Right.
Ms. Sunega?
So, I, I, I appreciate that input. I, I think that maybe the option, but you delete one as it is, which identifies the at-risk youth, which is the ones we want to, and we delete number two. Because it is, it is now four priorities. You're still left with deleting number two, you're still left essentially with four priorities.
And, and also, I, I should probably, I don't know if this is on.
It is.
Yeah, it's on.
Also, I should probably remind, um, the committee and the council, providing affordable housing, expanding economic opportunities are HUD objectives of this-
Okay.
Program. And so, those priorities should remain. We've struggled with economic, um, expanding economic opportunities. Um, we're trying, you know, to bring back, as an example, the commercial facade program is one of those activities.
Oh, okay.
But, because of the economy over the last five years, uh, we've had little activity under that priority, but I think that there's a hope that we will be able to bring some activities under that priority. But, those two are HUD.
Okay, so, okay.
But those would be under capital.
But those would be under the capital. The suggestion is that those would be-
Well, you could possibly have a public service program, like a job training program, or something like that.
I have a question then. So, um, under number two, the, the expand educational and youth development opportunities, you never get any requests for A, B, or C, then nothing falls under that? And that would be either to Celeste or committee?
Not in recent years, but I recall.
Find back, did there, foster care, um-
Yeah, let's try.
At the school program, but I think, the foster care or at-risk youth.
But that, that was under at-risk youth, right.
Does CASA ever submit for?
Yes, but that's-
Okay. That would fall under the one C?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Well, maybe we're just as good, just where we are.
Let you guys hash it out.
So, I, so I think, I think what we've talked about, Mayor, if I could, I think-
Go ahead.
I think we've, we're, we're talking about, under service, we'll have one project, which actually is four, because of A, B, and C. And then under capital projects, we'll put four, three, and five? Or three, four, and five?
Three, four, and five.
Three, four, five. I had, yeah, I had threes at work. So, that kind of amends-
Okay.
And I think, I think city manager wants to say-
Mr. Hayes, Mr. Hayden?
Thank you, Mayor Patino. Uh, one of the things I was going to mention is, under category number four, uh, because what I, one of the things I heard is maybe possibility bifurcating this into public services, and then into capital, and the last three possibly being capital. Under number four, towards the end, uh, encouraging, expanding economic development opportunities, retaining jobs, assisting agencies that provide job training, that really wouldn't be capital. That would be more public services. And then also, under number five, where it says, uh, increasing services such as court enforcement, supported social services, again, those wouldn't be capital, those would be more, uh, public services, or, uh, service-related activities, they wouldn't fall under capital. So, you just need to be cautious, to lump three, and four, and five under capital, there are certain things there-
Absolutely.
-that don't qualify for capital, they're more services.
Okay. Mr. O'Rourke?
Let, let me ask you a question in that case, then. Uh, with the, uh, development of our, when it comes to be, uh, the downtown specific plan, and the economic opportunities, uh, out of that capital structure to improve, let's say, well, we've got others in here too, I guess I'm trying to put it in the way of the support for amenities up and down Main Street and Broadway, that we've talked about, saying it's very important, and the facade program and those things would be a big hit to the service area, if you were trying to fund it out of that. So, I, I guess I need clarification, if, and I, I made that kind of suggestion when I had a meeting over there with, uh-
Yeah.
The, the folks at, uh, Comdev, about how do we fund some of the things that we're saying need to be funded in that process, which is facades and, and helping businesses-
Utility improvements?
Very true. So, I, I'm not sure, Rick, if I understood what you were saying, or if I'm misunderstanding what you're saying.
What I, one of the things I heard earlier was that there's a possibility of bifurcating this, and that the, the last three items are more capital-related. What I was saying is throw caution onto that, because not all of the things there are capital-related. Some of them are services.
And maybe we should believe it like it is.
So-
Or, or, or-
Or Mayor?
And you can have the opposite, you can have some capital that is falling under number one.
And so, maybe, maybe I can make this suggestion then.
Okay, there's, there's a motion, there was, it died for lack of a second, so, do you want to do- So do you want to do something else?
Sure. Let me, let me make this suggestion. If, if the expand educational and youth development opportunities is, if we feel that's covered under C above, under, what if we do this? What if we eliminate the expand educational and youth development opportunities for now? Take that out as, as priority. Make C our number two priority, prevent juvenile delinquency and divert at-risk youth gang. Leave everything as it is. I think Mr. Hayden brings up a good point. We never know when even provide affordable housing may become a program service type of a, an item. I can't think of one off the top of my head. But I think for four and five, Mr. Hayden brings up good points that those could be potential for program service funds.
Mayor?
Ms. Sunega?
Could I just, like, offer the possibility that if we look at four, expand economic opportunities and take Councilmember O'Rourke's comments about how we're, we're moving forward now with the downtown specific plan and those kinds of things, and they may be wanting to come forward, that we just change that definition? Encourage and expand economic opportunities in the community by assisting commercial industrial businesses? And then, you know, something that aligns itself with the downtown specific plan so that those funds are available as we've directed more towards city projects and just cut out in creating or retraining jobs and assisting agencies? Then it stays as a capital project and offers then a pathway for funding possibly for some of the work that we're hoping to do in the downtown specific plan.
Just ask less since that's the Fed's guys, you know, expand economic opportunity. That's the verbage. Does that sound acceptable?
And I have a question for Councilman Boyton. You're, you're recommending that you take C and replace it with number two and keep under number two, A, B, and C with the new, with the new title. Is that what you're...
No. That would just eliminate, expand.
No, I'm, okay, I'm not in favor of eliminating two.
Yeah, that's what I needed to...
No. In fact, you know, I, I'm just, I think we've talked this, you know, and we, we had, I remember when we went through this discussion, I'm, I'm really fine with just leaving it the way it is because maybe it cannot be bifurcated because of, of some of it being capital and some of it being service.
No, and I agree with that. But I still would like to, to narrow the priorities. If we're saying that expand educational and youth development opportunities, A, B, and C, we have not seen requests for that over the last several years or haven't funded any requests for that over the last several years. Let's just take it out for now.
So, so maybe we need a motion.
There was, there was a need for this when we put it in.
So here would be, here would be my motion. My motion would be that under priorities, number one would be prevent homelessness and address critical emergency, at-risk youth, or actually, prevent homelessness and address critical emergency and special population needs. A and B would stay the same. Number two would be address at-risk youth by preventing juvenile delinquency and diverting at-risk youth from gain involvement, crime, substance, et cetera, as it's written. Number two, A, B, and C would be eliminate it. Number three would stay the same. Number four would stay the same. And number five would stay the same.
And then are we, is that, does that include bifurcating? That we have them under capital?
We would not, we wouldn't bifurcate. We would, we would keep it all as, as priorities for both, capital as, as well as program service.
Can we have discussion about that?
Sure.
Certainly. You want some discussion going on?
I'm sorry. I know, Mayor, you're tired. I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's fine.
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm, so, you know, it's, I'm thinking about, you know, we have two goals here, is we want to make sure that we're using these funds to do the things that we direct to do, but also take into account the workload on staff and some of, I guess for me, because I have the, the benefit of two hours with the committee and I know what some of your concerns are, I don't think that helps the committee. I think the bifurcation helps the committee because now they've got two pots of money. We've narrowed the scope and it will make it easier. I think if we don't do that and we leave it unbifurcated, it doesn't really narrow the scope that much for them. So just for discussion.
Okay.
Given that being a goal is that, you know, the committee provided, well, shared with me the feedback about too many priorities and, you know, not enough money, too many opinions.
Okay.
Mayor, would you like the committee to revisit these priorities based on this discussion along with the suggested changes and come back to council?
No. I, I saw one, heads going. Let me, let me tell you something. When it comes to the expanded educational and youth development opportunities, I think those are very important. And, and I don't know how, how you may define at-risk kids in there, but there are foster kids that we have a great population now in this community I think we need to address. And I would just like that to stay in there. I, I don't think, after Mr. Hayden pointed out, I don't think that we can bifurcate three, four, and five. So I'm just, I'm just fine with it staying the way it is. But you did make a motion. Was there a second? No? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Direction.
So you've, you've got direction, I guess. You have a direction and everything?
Yes, thank you.
You know, I want to thank all of you. I think we've just got some people to leave. Thank you all so much for being here. I know I speak for my, just myself, this has been very educational for me going through this and sitting and discussing. I learned, I learned a lot more and certainly appreciate everything that you do because that's a lot of hard work. If I had to do this meeting once a month, I don't think I would love it all that much. But thank you so much, all of you, for what you do. Any comments, Council?
No, thank you.
This meeting is adjourned.
Wait, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Marquez.
Chair, I'd like to say thank you to the city council and mayor for being here tonight and helping us out and giving us direction. And we appreciate your support and your guidance and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned.